I do believe that we have, we are going to go into non-public quickly at the beginning of the meeting to discuss a couple of things. So if I can ask the public just to step out for a couple of minutes and then we'll come and grab you to come right back in.
We need a motion to go in.
Oh, sorry.
Motion to go into non-public.
Second.
Under, what are we going under?
C and K.
C and K?
K.
Yep, C and K.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Negotiations.
All right, so the November 3rd Northwood School Board meeting is now open to the public. I'd like to...
Motion to approve the...
Well, I'd like a motion to seal the minutes.
Motion to seal the minutes of our non-public today. I don't even know what the date is.
November 3rd.
It's the 3rd.
November 3rd.
Second.
Do we do a roll call or just all those in favor?
All those in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opening public comments.
Want to ratify the contract or not?
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry. Where's the approval of the minutes on here?
After this, after public comments.
Oh, there we are, sorry, sorry. I had to look a little bit further down. Oh, yeah, that's true, why don't we do that? So, motion to ratify the Northwood School Board negotiation. I don't even know how to, is that what it is, the negotiations?
Motion to approve the Northwood Teachers' Contract, Northwood Teachers' Association Contract.
Prove it or ratify it?
Same thing.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Okay.
We were sending it forward.
Okay. Second. Second.
I made the motion to you. So, in the amount of, so...
I seconded it.
If I'm making it, then I'm going to add a little to it. So, it's a three-year contract, so motion to approve the Northwood Teachers' Association Contract. It's a three-year contract. The first year is going to cost $88,109. The second year is going to cost $78,000, $78,937. And the third year is going to cost $77,512. And I just want to make a little mention that, yes, we know that is a little high. This is in exchange for the teachers waiving any rights they have to the four years that they did not receive a contract, so that we don't have to talk to them about that anymore. So, and we will be able to bring in new teachers at their correct pay scale based on their education and tenure on the job. And if you have any questions later, you can ask us about that. And I'm done.
That's a pack of a motion.
And it also...
Well, we could talk about the whole contract. I just, I want to start early about why it's...
I seconded it. I did, I seconded it, yeah.
When you're third.
Any further discussion?
Did we get it all?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, opening public comments. Anyone in the public would like to say anything?
Here she comes.
Until the end? Okay. Put anyone on the board? No? I would, actually. I would just like to read something that I found in the Sun, from the November 2nd Sun. "Northwood can be proud. What a wonderful group of 4th graders, well-behaved, informed, and polite. I had the pleasure of giving a tour to the State House of the Northwood 4th grade students. I have been giving tours to students for 16 years and love to see the students come to their State House to learn more about their government. The teachers did an outstanding job preparing the students for their tour and they came to Concord with a great background on how laws are made in New Hampshire. They were enthusiastic and engaged during their mock legislative session. Just loved hearing their thoughtful and concerned debate over our bill to add one more, one hour of school to the school day for all New Hampshire students. Usually, this mock bill is voted down by students, but several, several great debaters in the class use arguments such as 'more education gives you a better chance to get into a good college and then you get a better job,' 'an extra hour will give you, give, an extra hour will help those who need extra help' with some subjects. And as one student said, 'more education equals a better life.' They happily voted yes in both the House and Senate chambers to move more education. I commend the educators in Northwood for creating such an engaged community of learners. Well done.' Virginia Drew, State House Visitors Center Director." I just want to say, congratulations to the 4th grade team for a wonderful job well done. No one else? Okay. Approval of the board minutes. So, we have the, the board minutes, and then we also have the working session minutes.
Motion to approve the October 20th minutes.
I'll second that. I have any discussion, any...
Yep, line 486.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I saw that.
Super kindergarten I ever saw.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Should be $67,000, not $6,700.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
That was it. I didn't know if on 450, like to 453, I didn't know if the reasoning for those long-term subs should be in the minutes. We had discussed it, so I just didn't know if that should be...
I don't think it needs to be.
No, okay. Then, the other, in 465 to 477, there's nothing in there that, that, and I don't know that we took an official vote, but that we basically had said to you, no, we're, we do not want Ms. DeLisandro to, or we're not giving her permission to put that back in. There's nothing really in there. It just says that this is what the lawyer recommended, but there's nothing in that that says that we, as a board, said no.
I mean, it does say they felt it was not necessary and want to make clear to Ms. DeLisandro that the board expects her to hire as necessary and fulfill the contract as written. I guess that doesn't say no.
But that's in, well, and that need to adjust the contract regarding eliminating Route 7. So, maybe it's just the wording of it, but I just felt like there was nothing in there that we directed Bob or Dr. Gudomski.
Well, you're really, you're really leaving it status quo. I mean, you're not, you didn't...
Okay.
Yeah, and 474...
Hasn't changed anything.
...to fulfill the contract as written.
Right, and I looked at that, yeah, right. And I guess that's it, and I just, the eliminating Route 7.
You're talking about the municipal plates.
Right, whereas the plates, right, yeah.
But then 474 does talk about the contract as a whole.
Right, yep, okay. And, yep. And the only other one was 525. I think it was Bree and Tim liked Human Dynamics.
Actually, it was me and Keith.
I thought it was Tim, okay.
It was Keith.
No.
Okay.
I'm not into Human Dynamics.
You're into more think strategies. All those in favor of the October 20th minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion for the work session? Or do we want to wait on those so we can read through them, or...
Those are much to read. Motion to approve the work session minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next up is the proposed budget review.
All right, you've got the proposed budget and the default budget in your, your packet. Just want to remind everybody that this is very much a work-in-process. This is certainly not where they're going to end up. Part of the process is to, to have the board work through the budgets and, and discuss things and add and delete things, so, you know, that's all part of the process. This budget that you have in front of you, it does have the curriculum director in it, it does have the full-day kindergarten in it. So, those were a couple of adjustments that were made. There were other changes along the way that were made, and, and actually, I've got a few more that Jocelyn has identified that have not gotten into this budget. So, as we go through it, I'll try to identify those pieces as well. And I, I do want to bring your attention to not only putting in the curriculum director and the full-day kindergarten, but if you're looking at the bottom-line budget on page 23, you know, you do have $285,000 increase in tuition co-browns, so that's a big influencing factor with this budget. So, just to take you through, and, and please tell me to slow down or speed up or whatever you want to do with, with your budget here, so. On the first page, the, you'll see that there's one teaching position that has been reduced. There's another teaching position that, that Jocelyn and I are in discussion about, and it's, we're looking specifically at the 7th and 8th grade positions. If you look at solely numbers, then it, you could probably reduce a teaching position. It's more difficult at the 7th and 8th grade. We've got some sing, we've got all single certification teachers in the 7th and 8th grade. You need to be highly qualified, so if you've got an LED K8 certification, you need to be highly qualified in each of the areas that you're teaching in the 7th and 8th grade, where an elementary ed in K6 can teach any configuration that, that you want to set up. So, we're trying to work through that, we're trying to work through scheduling, we're trying to balance things out. So, it's a balance between numbers of students and actually your course offerings. So, that, that position right now is still in the budget, but that's kind of a long-winded explanation on, on something that we're talking about right now. Any questions or, or comments on page 1?
I have two and a question. Teacher substitute wages, line 5120020, was $1,100, it was $1,500, and now all of a sudden it's $4,000.
What? Where? Where are you?
5120, aid substitute wages.
Oh, okay, I see.
You see it?
Yep.
We have an explanation for why that's increased so much? It's more than double.
Well, it's, it's still part of the current budget.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, the actuals.
But we didn't spend it, so why are we increasing it so much? I would, I mean, 2,000, would that be reasonable? It's still more than you spent last year.
Well, this, this, again, you're going to get more cracks at this budget. So, why don't I do this? Why don't I circle it and I will, we'll go back and look at the actuals and where we're at for this year?
Mm-hmm.
Because I see the history for 14, 15, 15, 16. We'll see where we're at this year, and if there's, if there's, if it's reasonable, then we can cut some money off that.
I'd say the same to the next line, the tutor wages. They were zero for two years in a row, so I just would be curious, did we spend any of that in the current year?
That is a, that, so when you have a student that's out for medical reasons, or if they need tutoring, you have some policies that you're going to give them tutoring, and that's what that means.
But we have neck tutors, so what is this extra?
Totally different animal.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Right, no, well, then let me finish.
As I said, because it's...
Let me finish explaining that, and it'll be very clear. Those are medical tutors that are usually used after school for either your elementary kids or sometimes your high school kids when they're put out, although we try to take the high school portion out of the tuition that we pay them, so we get the high school to do it, right? But when you have a student who's out for a significant period of time because of an illness, you have to provide a tutor. That isn't going to be during the school day, that's going to be outside the school day, and you're going to hire somebody for maybe 10 hours a week, $25 an hour, and they're going to go tutor the student. The reason that $1,000 is in there, and then there's also $1,000 in this, there's also a couple thousand dollars in the special ed lines, is whether you did it the year before is really rather irrelevant, because you've got to have it in the budget in case you need it.
Has it always been in the budget, then?
No.
And we've just never spent it? Because it says...
You have spent it in the past, and it hasn't always been in the budget, because your special ed tutor wages years ago were higher, so we moved it to do with your Section 504 or medical students out of special ed into regular ed. It's money that isn't spent for other purposes. That's why you see the $1,000 and the no actuals, because we don't draw up that money for another reason. It's there in case somebody becomes ill and we have to require, and we have to provide service.
Okay.
And there's a corresponding set of lines in the special ed lines.
I had also had a question I asked Marjorie at the last meeting about the dental insurance and why it went up so much, and she said she was going to look into that.
I think that was, was that one of your questions, Tim?
Dental insurance, no.
It was my question.
Okay.
Oh, you mean from before.
Yeah, on the, okay.
Probably because all these new hires probably took family plans.
Maybe, but we still want to get the answer.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I just want to know what the increase was. That was all I had on that page.
Well, I have several questions. So, just so that the school board members know, I emailed Dr. Gudomski... Yeah, we got your list. Oh, you gave him a bunch of questions on last Sunday, and he's delivered them to me tonight. One of the really big issues that I'm looking at personally is the usage of substitute wages to augment normal everyday, uh...
Sick week?
No, I don't mind sick. So, my question is, what percent of the 15, 16, $38,559 teacher subwages was actually used for teacher sick days? And the answer for that one was only $21,000, 57%. So, that means that the remainder of that, which is somewhere around $16,000, was used for other purposes, to bring in substitute wages to free teachers for other things. I, I find that questionable, so...
Not exactly, Tim. The, the subwages, those were the percentages that were for sick days. It wasn't for personal days, it wasn't for workshops, it wasn't for other times that somebody, jury duty, those types of things.
Okay, so I'll re-ask that question tonight when I get home. I mean, I, I would like to know what percent we're using, and, and, so, Dr. Gudomski knows where I'm, where I'm, where I'm headed. He knows that I was very irritated several years ago when we were using substitute teacher wages to augment the office, for instance. So, we didn't have anybody sick, we just brought in a substitute teacher and put her in the offices that do this and that and these and those and that, you know, et cetera. And that, quite honestly, irritates the bejesus out of me. So, I'm trying to figure out how much of the money is used correctly, what percent of the money is being used correctly for sick personal days? It's in the contract, they, they're entitled to that, I don't have a problem with that. But if you actually went back more than two or three years, you will see that the teacher sick day line was in the 14, 15, 16, $17,000, and it's gone crazy in the last few years, and I'm trying to figure out why. Not just that line, if you look at other lines, and, and the questions are in there and the answers are there, one was 36% for sick days. We're using these lines to do other things other than what's in the CBA, and it bothers me. Some I can understand, but I, I, I thought we had stopped that, but it seems to be getting good size. And I, I know that I got picked on a little bit, because I honestly feel, having gone through the teacher retirement, the first year we had five, the second year I think we had four, these were all teachers my age who, honestly, the young teachers are going to have less health problems than someone my age, and I think that should be reflected in the...
And you keep saying that, but the younger ones also have sick kids, that's the thing too.
Well, that's, that may be.
Pregnancies.
Yeah.
But, but they, they don't have as many issues. So, I, I just trying to figure out what the percent is used for sickness or CBA issues and what percent is used to fill up positions in the, in the school, to augment office or this or that, or these or those. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I agree, and the short answer is, and Missy spent a lot of time under my direction trying to get a detailed answer, and this does the technical aspect of your answer, but it doesn't answer your question.
All right, I'll re, I'll try to re...
Well, rephrasing it isn't going to help us, because I know what you're, what you're asking for, and I'm trying to give it to you, and I know that years ago, I, I understand what you were saying, because there was, there was a time when substitutes were coming in, instead of hiring a para position and covering things like that, which shouldn't happen. That's not our expectation that that happens. So, you know, the, it, they may come in occasionally to cover multiple classrooms if people are out. The expectation is not that you have a person coming in as a substitute without covering for somebody that's out, if that makes sense. I mean, like, your, your example of covering for the office because we're behind, the short answer to that is no. If there's somebody out, then naturally we'll try to get somebody in.
I don't mind if somebody's out.
I know the history that you're talking about, and, and that's not, that's not our expectation that that occur. So, I'm trying to get you a more detailed answer, I'm not sure if I can.
Okay, so, in this year's budget, we had reduced that, the teacher, teacher substitute wages to either 30 or 35,000. Because the budget was turned down by the town, we ended up with a default budget, which was the 40,000 from the year before.
Yep.
And so, I, I think that's a line that we should consider reducing to $30,000 and seeing if we can live with that.
38 or 35?
30.
Which line?
Teachers' substitute wages.
Oh, yeah. It was 38 last, I mean, the actuals from last year was 38,000.
I think that's where Tim was trying to find out, why was it 38 compared to what was used? And if it was that case, then it should be lower.
Well, we also had, we also had a couple of long-term subs that, that are going to knock that out of the ballpark.
Especially this issue too. And, and I appreciate that, I really do. I, I, it's, it's not like, it's not that I live in a vacuum. I, I know when teachers are out for a long time, and I, I, you know, I have a pretty good understanding of what's going on, but something just doesn't fit right to me, so that's why I'm looking.
What, what would the board like to do with that number for, for now?
Well, right now, we're going to have three long-term subs coming up. We got two, we just hired two.
This is next year.
Oh, yeah, that's correct, my bad. Yes, one of our problems we think we have a solution to.
Right, but we also have a younger staff and...
Well, if you could find an answer to what Tim's riddle is, that, I would like to see that first, and then if that's the case, if we're using 74,000 of it, 5,000 of it for not the reasons for its use, then lower it. If it was 10%, it would not bother me.
Did you say the actuals were for last year? For last year, it was 38,559. I'm sorry, you both said something at once, and I didn't hear any of it. 38,559, 50. Wow.
We did a couple of long-term subs too.
If it, if it was a difference of 10%, that's not what would bother me. But I'm more than willing to haul all of my paperwork in and show you that our, our teacher sub line was half of that, less than half of that, just a very few years ago. And I, I'm not sure why, I'm really not. And I do know that we have had some issues with some, some, some real health issues with some of our teachers, and I want the teachers taken care of, but something just...
Well, remember, I mean, a, a couple of long-term subs are going to, depending on the length of time that those people are out, I mean, if it's a long-term sub for four to six weeks, it's one thing, if it's four to six months, it, it adds up quickly, so.
Twelve weeks.
If you want, I mean, we can put it at 38,000 for now and continue the discussion, or whatever number you're comfortable with.
I told you the number I'm comfortable with.
So, here's the thing to the, and I'm not saying I don't want to go through the budget the way that Bob is, but one thing, and I, and I said this last time, and I actually highlighted it in the minutes from exactly what Bob asked us from our last meeting, and it said, "Dr. Gudomski, Dr. Gudomski," there we go, "asked if the board had a suggested budget number they wanted to hit." And I do believe, at least for, this is my second year, I think, on the board, and for a number of years before that, the SAU has come to the board and said, "Give us the bottom line, we will bring it back to you with those cuts." And I don't see why we don't do that.
Well...
Again, I know the...
May I answer only for me? I, I don't think there's anything more onerous than, than what you suggested.
Because we're the ones in the school every day working with the money that's there?
Well, we, we were, we were elected, five school board members were elected to work with Dr. Gudomski or work with the SAU and, and look at a budget, to, to supply a budget. So, we, we have, what, I don't know, what is this, is this the budget that's 12 million? 39,000? Is that, is that what it is? You know, so, I, I mean, I can look at numbers. Last year, we spent $11,633, that just ended four months ago. Take out $296,000, that's the bond payment that we'd have, no more, that's 11,337. Add in the teachers' contract, that's 62. Add in the para contract, that's 45. That's 11,445. How in the world can we get from 11,445? And I do hear, and I disagree with that number too, the co-brown number, how can we get from 11,445 to 12 million? I mean, we have reduced almost 100 students and gone nowhere down in the budget. Nowhere, nowhere down. Doesn't make sense to me. So, yes, I have issues, I...
I'm not saying that I don't have issues.
But I, I don't want to give, I, I would like to sit here, I would have liked to have sat here months ago with you all and started working through, and I did bring that article, if anyone wants it, where, where Merrimack had worked through the summer on their budget, because they understood that there's an issue. You know, they, they were really upset that they got a default budget. And so, they, they, they worked really hard trying to figure out how to, to get around that, and, and that's not what we're doing. We're, you know, I don't want to hand off my job to somebody else. I don't, sorry.
I'm not saying hand my job off.
And my job is, is I've spent a lot of time looking at this budget.
What did he...
Yeah, you spend a lot of time looking at numbers on a sheet of paper.
That's correct.
Not sitting in the classroom taking care of these students.
That's not my job. I'm not a teacher.
Exactly, no.
I'm not a teacher.
No, you're not a superintendent, you're not a principal either.
Oh, I've had my say. I, I think it should be 30,000, leave it at 40,000, that's up to the board.
That's your opinion, I...
That's right, and, and I am here to give my...
If there's a second on that, that's fine, we can take a vote on it, too.
Well...
I'm not saying, I'm just saying, is there a second for that?
I am going to give you my opinion.
And I'm saying, is there a second on that?
I didn't make a motion.
Okay, then, we'll go to the next thing, please.
Any other questions on 1?
Can't wait for 2.
Page 2 is, I believe, fairly unchanged from, from when you saw this last.
We did ask about the workers' compensation last time. I think that was in this, wasn't it? I think that was part of Tim's.
That was...
Workers' compensation salary, or what, the compensation is similar, however, it is broken out by positions that they consider. Truancy officers, school professionals, including clerical, schools, I don't know what it is. I mean, that's not my question. My question is, why is the increase so much? I don't care how it's broken out, this just seems a 42.86% increase.
I think it cut... There's a note up above that explains some of that.
The premium holiday, is that because of that?
Yeah, we're not going to be, we had a premium holiday for the last two years that offset some of that, so that, we're not anticipating that that's going to occur.
Is that from the place that we got the money back from?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's just, like, all over the map, though.
Because it's based on experience. Your experience rating. So how many claims you have each year determines your rates for the following year.
And really, the $4,000 fluctuation in workman's compensation is not, I mean, I understand the concern when it goes up $11,000, but-
So you're saying we've had a lot of workman's comp claims?
I haven't said that at all.
I think some of it has to do with that premium holiday as well, that we're not anticipating.
I'm saying, if you look at the swing, you had the premium holidays in '13, '14, '15, right? And there was still a swing in there. That's what Bree pointed out. And that's based on, that swing is probably based on your experience.
I mean, the swing, a few thousand dollars here or there, but like you just said, $11,000 is not a small thing.
Yeah, I think if we stay away from 12 and stay away from 16, you can see a swing in 14, right? Yes?
I'll make sure that Marjorie comes, she's going to be, obviously, at your next meeting, so I'll make sure that she has an explanation for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on two? Gets into your supplies, pass science, language arts.
I have a question on line 5641. My question is about the note. I'm confused by this. It says-
A lot of the notes are still, there are lots of these notes.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
The notes need-
The line we were just talking about.
The notes need to be redone.
Okay. So that note is not pertinent?
Page three, we've got a decrease in general supplies. Classroom workbooks and math textbooks are increasing.
The classroom workbooks? We don't have, we're getting all new? Is that what that is? Because it's gone from zero to zero to zero to 4,500.
Remember what that was, Jocelyn?
It's the consumables that go with the new program, so Foundations has consumable workbooks, so workbooks that kids write in and therefore are not reusable from year to year. So Foundations, cursive, for third grade.
And then that'll be in the budget again next year because you have to-
Yep.
On page four, one of the things that did not get into this budget, I'm looking at Jocelyn's notes.
Replacement of furniture.
Replacement of furniture, there's going to be an additional $1,742 taken out of that. Would you like to speak to that decrease?
Sure. Those were requests that had been made for this year's budget, that initially we did not have enough money for, but once things played out, we were able to find money elsewhere to pay for those things this year, so we took them out of next year's proposals.
Minus 1,742, you said?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. And page four and five is your special education. Anything you want to add to that, Scott?
If you take a look at the special ed wages, those notes are accurate. We need to increase one para position due to student need for move-ins for this year, actually. And also, a few years ago, the teachers, as part of negotiations, they extended the school day by 15 minutes, and we didn't do that at that time for the pairs, and we need to. So that 15-minute calculation is in that line, too. But the good news is, is when you look at your differences in hires over this year to, over last year to this year, it brings that line up 4%. So that's good news, because you're adding a position and you're extending everybody by 15 minutes. Any more questions on page four? I'll let you know, I'm questioning the last line, and I'll take a look at that and come back to you.
The speech?
Yeah.
The salary line?
Yep.
I just want to take a look at that. If we go onto page five of the budget, page 20 in the packet, any questions on that page?
Tutor wages, again, will be the same explanation as the other.
No, this is a different explanation.
Oh, great.
So special ed, so identified kids, if they're removed from school for over 10 days, do a disciplinary or behavioral incident. Or if one of my kids in an out-of-district placement, if the placement determines that that's no longer appropriate, then we need to provide 10 hours of service a week in tutoring until we find a new placement or adjust the student's IEP and behavior plan and return them to the setting. So that's what that is. It's a little different.
It doesn't look like we're using it either, though.
Because it doesn't happen a lot. But you still need to make sure you have it there in case it does.
I see.
And actually, that line's, although, wait a minute, which?
It was 5121.
Sorry, 5121. Yeah, we've kept that pretty much at 2,000. I think I reduced that a couple of years ago from there. So, I mean, $2,000, I think is a safe number for that. I mean, the big increase in special education in the elementary section is the health insurance. It's almost $85,000. But if you look, the buyout's down, but not as much. Any more questions on page five?
When will these numbers be? I mean, the statements in there, like, the do-not-exceed came in at a decrease of 1.7%. Anything that's not correct, one of those are going to be fixed.
Yeah, I'm hoping at the next go-around that we can get all the notes fixed.
Those notes on this page are right. So on page six, I will highlight, so let me tell you what's going on with, and this will apply to the high school line, too. 1,205569061, there's two different things that are going on there. You're looking at the addition of an out-of-district placement for a student who was removed from the home and then identified and was homeschooled and was identified as a special education student when they returned to the district, and the level of need is too much. So that student is actually presently out of district, and I put it in next year's budget. The other issue that's going on with that line is, you'll see, each year, I adjust those costs by about 3%. So in the rate-setting manual that's put out by the New Hampshire Department of Ed, the way the RSA was structured previously is, they could really only increase rates in the out-of-district placements by 3%. There's some documents in the legislature right now, based on feedback given from the private providers, that that 3% is not enough for them to keep their doors open. So Santina Thibodeau, the state director of special education and in-service, informed all the directors that it might be wise to adjust those lines by 5% for next year because the rates are going to increase.
What line is that?
It's any of the out-of-district lines. So for the purposes of this discussion right now, we're talking about 5561061.
Where was the 15,000?
The other public schools back in 1,100, that's when moved to other public schools' high school.
Yeah. What is that about?
So when a student's removed from the home in Northwood and placed with a foster family in another district, there's two conditions that apply. If they're a special education student, the district's obligated to pay the either prorated cost of special education students at the other school or the ADM tuition rate. Okay? That's the first condition. Second condition, if they are foster-placed in a town that is not Northwood, that does not have its own high school, then it doesn't matter if they're general ed or regular ed, the district has to pay the tuition rate for the other school. The reason that was removed from elementary school is, I'd already previously, we just didn't change it, is that last year was an eighth grader, and this year is a ninth grader and eleventh grader. So you're going to see that $30,000 reflected in the high school line.
Thank you.
The other thing I do want to look at, that I'm going to tell the board about, is I want to look at the new equipment line. And the reason that I want to look at the new equipment line is, we had budgeted for room amplification systems for a student who has deaf-of-hearted hearing, and that student left the district, so we may have the money this year to cover those expenses. I'll sit with Jocelyn, and we'll figure that out, and maybe we'll reduce that line. You remind me to sit with you and figure that out. Any more questions on page six?
I guess I do. So we bought two heavy-duty locking fireproof file cabinets already. We need this third one?
That's going to be a building question, Tim. I don't inventory the cabinets, we just put it in the budget. Can we just check that with Ms. Gulick?
Yep.
I mean, at the end of the year, we had some money, and we bought two-
Yeah.
-filing cabinets, fireproof filing cabinets, and they were quite expensive.
Yeah, they're like 912.
I'm just wondering if this kind of just was left in there, you know, if that's last year's-
Yeah, I think-
It was deliberately put in, but I can double-check with her on the justification for that.
I mean, I would say a school of this size, the special ed department probably have four to five cabinets.
We have five very full ones right now.
Yeah, so. Want to go onto page seven?
Sure.
Page seven, you finish off your special education and move into your co-curriculars?
Really not a lot of adjustments there. Any questions on page seven?
Assemblies. 50% increase on that?
So as we move into adopting more of a positive behavior intervention and supports model, and bringing in more school-wide events around school climate and culture, I wanted to have that money in there, in case we were able to get a good speaker or do a great, you know, sort of series of activities.
Almost double what we had two years ago.
A million percent more than three years ago.
There you go. Sounds like a lot. Do we know what we spent? Or what we're going to spend in the current budget?
The assemblies line is often difficult to get a good read on what you're going to spend, because that's the type of thing where there's never enough money in there, and if it's in there, we'll spend it. Because getting speakers in and different things for assemblies can often be pricey.
And I would like to see more assemblies.
And Bree, to answer your question, last year, it looks like $850 was spent.
Yeah, that's the actual for 1516.
Right.
But we don't know what that was spent for?
We can find out. I don't know off the top of my head, no.
It sounds like the price for Tiger Theater. Yeah. From Plymouth.
I also have a question about the artist-in-residence line. Did he increase his fee for that or something? It was 2,500 and then 2,500 again?
No, we, well, I think that's a great idea to increase that. It's not a he, it's a, that's, and that last year was the first year that it was used in a few years, but I think that's a great idea to increase it because-
It's not just him, it's-
It's anybody that they bring in.
The artist-in-residence is basically a concept, a program, and it could be a glassblower, it could be-
The guy did the murals, right?
Did the murals. But it's, every year, it should be, it's most likely a different person that comes in and does something different artistically. So that's something that past boards have encouraged for years. And last year was really the first year that it-
Yes.
-came to fruition in quite a while.
It's been in there.
Yeah.
And I don't mind it, as long as it's used for that purpose. But we, last year was the first year, I think, since I've been on the board. Honestly, if you go over and visit the Stratford School, you will find many, 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 many things on their walls throughout the school that were done by artists in residence, and some of them are quite beautiful. So if it's done correctly, it's a wonderful program. If it's not done, it's a waste of money.
Anything else on seven? Page eight, see a few different reductions. Athletics, the supplies are down.
Can we, what's the explanation on that?
I assume it's because we purchased a number of things toward the end of last year. Is that-
It reflects what the athletic director asked for for next year.
That was, that was-
I spoke to Mr. Breger, and I asked for this list, and his actual calculation would be $4,275 for this year. So he would, his assumption would have been that it was $4,000, and he doesn't, I spoke to him, and he doesn't know why it was reduced. He was never asked to reduce it.
Must be an error on my part, then. I can go check that.
And we could, we had, Mike couldn't make it in today to talk about it, but he's more willing to come in next meeting to talk about it, because there is equipment that is needed throughout the year, like baseballs are something you need. You need to replace the nets or have extra nets. Game balls, uniforms, you know, there is a bunch that, I mean, we could take a look at it and probably get it down below 4,000, but cutting it $2,500 is going to significantly stop sports.
I, that wasn't deliberate, so I must have missed the reverse of that or something. So I will-
So this is health, PE supplies?
Correct.
Athletic.
Athletic supplies.
1420.
One line above that, the officials, umpires, and referees line, looks like it's been pretty consistent for the last few years, and now all of a sudden, it's $1,000 more?
Cross-country. They do more meets.
And they had a great season this year. So it'd be great to see them increase the size of their team and do more with that.
What would the board like to do with that athletic supply line?
I'd like to see it go back to the 4,000.
Me, too.
Don't feel super strongly about it.
I think we should compromise somewhere in the middle.
That seems reasonable to me.
Allison, I don't know, I'm sorry. Jocelyn and Mike need to meet.
Yep.
I just need to look back at the paper. It just seems like I've missed-
Before we adjust anything, Mike and Jocelyn need to meet.
Yeah, have her check into it. I'm not going to approve or not approve any number without her checking on it.
I wouldn't be changing anything until that's done.
Thank you.
We certainly need more bats.
I think we should pay $1,500 for a bat, Tim.
I just got a gray bat.
Down the end of page eight, we've got the guidance, starting the guidance positions. You'll see the corresponding reductions there with staff changes. And guidance moves into page nine. Quite a significant decrease, and that's just the staff changes.
Yep.
Standardized testing line. Standardized testing line, those to cover support and incentives for testing. Can you tell me what that means?
Are we on page?
Page nine.
Page nine.
Line 53-30.
So often around smarter balanced time, the school has purchased healthy stacks, breakfast, prizes for kids who have shown exceptional effort in the testing, in an effort to get them to give it their all. So that's, that's what was in the budget and that's what I left there.
This just seems like a lot compared to what was spent in the previous year.
Wouldn't have smarter balanced testing then?
Oh, well, explains it all.
15-16.
So to do well on a test in school, we have to buy them lollipops.
I mean, $1,000 worth of lollipops.
We do not buy lollipops, it's not in the health policy.
We have $314. I mean, doesn't anything go up that much?
Take a motion to cut it to 500. I'll second it.
Still, 500 is still more, isn't it?
It is.
Increase the budget.
Typically, it's not uncommon for schools to have, whether you want to call them snacks or...
Well, there are Nutri-Gain bars here.
Yeah, right.
But like I said, if we've done it in the past and we have a dollar amount for what we spent in the past, I just want to know why all of a sudden it's...
And if I want...
...triple that amount.
I think it's why it's 314 is because they only bought snacks at the end of the year, they didn't buy snacks at the beginning of the year. I'm pretty sure that's the reason why it was $314, but I'm not too positive.
I think it was the other way around, Mr. Wells.
It was the other way around. They bought them at the beginning and then at the end.
Smarter balance, actually, let me defer to a nod in the audience. Smarter balance is in the fall.
No.
Kneecap science is in the fall. When's kneecap science?
They're both in the spring.
What is it? But they used to be staggered.
The kneecap used to be in the fall.
Right.
But it's not anymore.
So, now they're both in the spring, but they're at different times, they're not the same week.
So then, so you want to do it twice, so make it 600.
I don't really have much skin in what you make it, but...
What would the board like to do?
I'd like to see it 600. Fair compromise.
600. I've got a big, huge barrel of...
Demi worms?
What is it?
Snickers bars?
I can't think of the candy.
Kale, the kids like the kale.
They haven't even opened it. That can't...
Well, Tim, you gotta give us a little more.
It'll be dead next year. What?
You gotta give us a little more to figure out what you're talking about.
Tootsie Rolls. I have a big barrel of Tootsie Rolls.
It's against the health policy.
Oh, you can't give, oh, you gotta give me a little more.
Mama, my cavity came out.
Yeah, Joe couldn't give the kids a pizza party, he couldn't bring them popcorn, he couldn't bring, he had to, we had to buy sugar-free popsicles. That was finally okayed.
Tell them to bring the pizza to the SAU.
Yeah. Nothing wrong with all of that stuff.
I agree.
It's better with popcorn.
All right, page nine, we've got the nurses' salary and benefits on the bottom of page nine.
What's a nurse's substitute?
Substitute nurse.
I mean, really, like that, if the nurse is sick, we bring in a substitute nurse?
Absolutely.
Oh, my God, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, we bring in Barbie, that's what we brought in the past.
Yeah, Barbie should just volunteer her time for that.
Have you, do you know how many diabetics there are in the school nowadays?
Yeah, you might want to be careful.
Really? Even with their sugar-free popsicles and all?
It's needed.
It's needed.
I'm not gonna argue with the nurses.
I was just asking.
She runs a tight ship.
I was just asking.
Nurse is a busy person.
She runs a tight ship.
When she's out, it gets very busy.
And she volunteered that she didn't need an aide.
Yes.
Couple of years ago, yes. So that saved us a lot of money right there.
So now you like her?
Well, she, look at her budget.
Page 10 finishes off the nurse.
Crickets.
Ain't no crickets in here.
You'll see contracted service ESL, you want to take that one?
A million percent.
A million percent.
Talk about your million percent.
A million percent. Well, we keep a dollar in the line to keep it open and we never have any ESL kids and all of a sudden, all three districts have an influx of ELL kids. So it's not really a mil, I mean, you can call it a million percent, Bree, you can look at the fact that I had a budget for the actuals, what it's gonna be.
We have a, what? What's an ESL kid?
English as a second language.
English speakers of...
English as a second language student.
Language or English speakers of other languages. You are...
English speakers of a second language.
You can call it ELL, which is English language learners.
English language learners, okay.
You can call it ESOL, which is English, yeah.
I got you.
Or you can actually call it LAP, which is limited English proficiency.
How about if we call it learn language if you want to live here?
That's the purpose of the service. We're not teaching them in their home language.
And any way you look at it, it's a million percent.
And any way you look at it, it's a million percent.
So what is this service? What does it do? What does it provide?
Teach them English.
I mean, we have English teachers. We have to have special English teachers.
Yeah, but federal law, you actually do. You actually are required to do that.
But with a certification our teachers can get?
And every single, yeah, absolutely, I have an ESL teacher on contract. That's why they get a portion of this. So every single year, I go in and pull a roster of all the English language learners across the districts that have come on the home language survey. And from there, I reach out to Stratford Learning Center, who I have a PSA with, to come in and assess those learners, and then I input that data into the state system, and then the state kicks back what we need to provide for service. And then we provide the service because it's federally mandated.
So what you really need to do is thank your blessings that you don't live in Nashua or...
Well, I think that you are going to have this experience because here's what I think is going on. In your greater and larger cities, when you have your immigration, people come in, they establish themselves and as they become more affluent and become concerned with the city and the crime and the poverty, they start to move out into the more rural situations. So you can actually look across all three districts and I can tell you that your ESOL population is up about 4 million percent.
Vote for Trump.
Oh, Tim.
You, Gary?
Anything else on page 10? Page 11, into your curriculum development stipends, staff mentoring, professional development.
I have two things. I think I thought about this with the curriculum director and I'm thinking that maybe we should stick with the two fifths for this year and see how it goes. It would help this budget. I think to try that out before trying to sell 100% full-time person, I would like to see it in the budget, but if, I feel like this board's priorities are elsewhere. I feel like they think that all-day kindergarten is more important. I don't know if I agree with that, but if we kept the two fifths curriculum director, I think that would be a good compromise for me as far as testing it out and then revisiting it next year, seeing how it goes. We do have reduced numbers in the student population and maybe two fifths will be okay. We can try it. I just...
And I've thought about it some too and...
You're gonna say the exact opposite, right?
No, not the exact opposite. I'm just, and, you know, three fifths, you know, I don't think two days a week's enough. You know, is five days a week too much? But again, I'm not here five days a week. I don't know, but we need curriculum.
Oh, yeah, I don't disagree with that, but I think it's a lot to put in one budget if you want to try and sell both of those things to the taxpayers. I think it's gonna be a hard sell.
But I have to say kudos to Dr. Gudomsky and to Jocelyn for pulling together a budget that is so close to the default budget with both of them in there.
What?
The default's not really done.
That's, oh, my goodness.
I miss. There's not that much of a difference right now.
Of course there's not, Barbie. The first line in this default budget is off by $68,000.
Again, Tim, I am not as good with numbers as you are.
I just look. I'm sorry.
How is, how is it off by 68?
We're not in the default budget.
We're not there yet. Let's hold off. Anyway, curriculum. What would the board think about maybe a three fifths, putting that in instead of full-time? I'd go two fifths or three fifths. I think that's reasonable for, to try it out. And if it does a good job and if it helps, we can talk about it again next year, maybe increasing it. But I'm, I'm afraid to put that in at that amount with the budget that we're presented
I guess I would like to see what the numbers look like with, because again, I don't know, you know, how much it's gonna drop it down. I would prefer three days versus two days. I hate to put you on the spot, but I guess I'm gonna do that. You know, it's, it's sort of a, and it's, it's not an easy question to answer, you know, kindergarten versus a curriculum director, because where is it going to do the most good? It's, there, you know, there's a huge population on both ends that it's going to do the most good for. And I've had this discussion with Bob also. It's, you know, it's, it's tough for me too because I've been a big, huge proponent of this full-day curriculum or full-time curriculum director from the get-go. But again, I want our budget to pass.
Well, I think that you, I think that you need to take a few things into consideration. We've been talking about a curriculum director for quite a while now. We've been talking about full-day kindergarten for quite a while now. We've tried to piece in a couple days. We got creative in the, in last year with, with the curriculum director split and that wasn't necessarily successful. Kindergarten last year wasn't necessarily successful. And now I'm certainly hearing loud and clear that people are not liking this budget. Your special ed is up $123,000. Your curriculum director adds another $134,000. Your full-day kindergarten is going to add in the vicinity of $65,000. So I think that, you know, you need to make a decision that if, and your tuition to the high school is up another $280,000, you're retiring a $290,000 bond. I know everybody was looking for a $300,000 reduction this year, and if that's your goal, then I think you ought to take the curriculum director out. I think you ought to take the kindergarten out and put them in warrant articles and, and let the public speak to that and, and support that. Because, you know, everybody's getting very frustrated that your budget is, is up here. You've got these things in, you've got some uncontrollable costs in here, you've got your tuition up $280,000. So if you truly want the, the budget down, then you're gonna have to cut these out. And I, I think that, you know, the, if these things get cut out, there are things that, that we're not gonna be able to accomplish. You know, early intervention, early instruction to kids for kindergarten is, is extremely important to reducing the achievement gap and, and helping kids earlier not fall behind. The curriculum director, we have a lot of work to do with curriculum and there's just not enough time and enough people to accomplish that. So, you know, I, it, to me, it's not a confrontational thing. I mean, there's a price tag to this. So you need to decide whether you want it in or out and, and decide where that goes.
Essentially, I agree in, in concept with everything you said. I've said from day one that I support the theory of having a curriculum director. And I've said from day one, how are you gonna pay for it? If, and, and we haven't even got to the default budget. I think the difference between the default budget and the regular budget is like $14,000, which is kind of crazy, but we'll get that when we get there. My point to you is that, again and again and again, we as a board, I, I don't care about the SAU, and I don't mean that I don't care about them, but we as a board sooner or later need to look at this budget and make some decisions and then tell the SAU what we would like them to do. Not give them a number. That, that, that just boggles my mind that we would give them a number like last year. And it's not that they're not capable or incapable or I don't like them or I do like them or this or that. It's our job to look at the budget and decide what is the best way with a reasonable amount of money that we can get approved by this town to educate our students. And there are many different things. You, you can see from the letter that Mr. Gudomsky, Dr. Gudomsky provided you of questions that I asked him, where my mind is going, as some of the ways that we could think about, discuss, and reduce our budget so that we can have a full-time curriculum director and/or kindergarten. Now, nobody wants to make those hard decisions and that's fine, but we have many different areas. We dropped 30 kids this year. We're gonna drop 20 more next year and then hopefully we should start leveling out. We have dropped a lot of students since we've reduced the budget and the teachers. And I came in just after the last time that happened and it was an ungodly mess and I don't want to be part of that. We need to do it reasonably. But we have two academic pares we could talk about rather than a second teacher, seventh grade. We have tremendous amount of help as far as I'm concerned in the office for, for as small a school as we have to have, have as much help in the office, so that's another area we could talk about. There are, all over the school is areas where we could cherry pick 20,000 here, 10,000 there and end up with an amount of money for, but nobody wants to do that. They want to just say, give Dr. Gudomsky a number and let her run with it. Well, I don't, so you guys are gonna have to do that. If I gave him a number, it'd be 11-5 and you'd shriek.
So I'm seeing this in two different ways. We got, with decrease in population, right, we already reduced one teacher. We're probably gonna be reducing another teacher for next year's budget, right? So we're doing that, we're, we're reducing salary that way, right? But then we're always want to be proficient. Like I think we were talking about when our goal setting that we, one of the things that we liked was everybody be proficient in their statewide testing. Well, to do that, we need certain things and, and we have theories of it that a full-time kindergarten would be one of it, stuck kids off early. The second part was getting a full-time curriculum director, all right? So if we're reducing salary and we're adding teachers, right, we are gonna be right around the same thing. And that's what this budget is. I mean, it's off, but we'll buy a little bit, but it's almost what, where we're at. And we're adding two crucial pieces to get us proficient in statewide testing across the board. I mean, that's what, Tim, you want, you know? And so we have to look at that. I know, I know our student population's going down. We'll have to reduce teachers, but we also want our kids the best education they could have.
Well, you're making the assumption, which I don't, that the only way to increase proficiency in our school here in Northwood is to add staff. And I, I just disagree. I, you know, you're, and we're never gonna agree on that.
Well, but there are two crucial pieces though.
I could take you to school after school that doesn't have all-day kindergarten and doesn't have only 30% of their third grade proficiency in that.
We're not adding teachers that are teaching, like, the kindergarten, right? Where there's study after study that show that kid, full-time kindergarten, and I know you could counter and say there's other studies that say they don't.
There is.
Right? But then the curriculum director, and we get everybody on the same page, you know, that's what we want. I mean, that's why I think half the problem is, you mentioned it last, I think every time is that some teachers are not doing the Go Math. Well, this curriculum director, if he, if she sets a curriculum and there's people not doing the Go Math, right, that's gonna be, well, how...
I, I'm sorry, I have an assistant principal, a principal, an assistant superintendent and a superintendent. That should make sure that if we go out and purchase Go Math for grades, that those teachers in those grades should teach that Go Math, period. End of conversation as far as I'm concerned. But you can talk all day. Meanwhile, Barbie, I'm sorry, I'm going to the bathroom. If you want to have a break, you can, and if you don't, then you can just keep talking.
Okay. I have a question. If we put a full-time curriculum director in the budget and it, we get the default budget, does that, is that the same as the warrant article of no means no?
It doesn't, no, that's not a no means no, but the, you don't get the funding for the curriculum director.
Right, right, right. Okay.
I mean, this is not, this is not, you've got a bunch of difficult decisions to make here, but, you know, I think that we've, we've tried to be creative in the past and, you know, maybe it's time to pull it out, put it in a warrant article and, and try to educate the community and sell it that way.
I'd like to go through a couple more things before we, and I'd... I'd like to go through a couple more things before we, and I'd like to come back to the curriculum director, because there are a couple more spots, especially like on page 14.
Or you.
Yep.
Page 12, I have a question.
Yep.
Staff development workshops, it's at 5322 for $6,000. And then if you look on page 16, on line 5322, it says staff development, also for $6,000. Are those two different things? Is that the same thing twice? Can you clarify those for me?
What page do you want, Bree? I got the first one on page 12.
The other one's on page 16, line 5322.
On page 16.
Almost to the bottom.
One is contractual for your teachers in the CBA for workshops.
Okay.
And one is in your principal and assistant principal contracts as for staff development opportunities.
Okay. Can we just change the title of that line, then, just for future reference? Because I think if somebody looks at that, to me, I looked at that and thought it was the same exact thing. It's just not.
Well, one's under Office of the Principal, and the other is under In-Service Training.
Staff development. And you were on page 14, then? Was that where you were headed next?
Well, yeah, unless people had questions on 13.
I didn't have any on 13. I got a couple on page 14, though.
Might have the same ones, I'm not sure.
Technology?
Yep. So the Internet services, the minutes from our last one, and I don't know if this is one of the ones that Jocelyn had brought forward, but in the information that had been sent to us or by Steve, we had voted to, or I think we had voted, he had asked about changing the Internet from, or he was going to call Bay Ring Networks and change everything, and it said, "With this new information, I would recommend lowering the Internet access line request from 10,806 to 3,600 for the FY 1718." And I didn't know.
I didn't make that change. I should have, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So what is the correct amount, then?
What's the change?
3,600.
That's the reduction?
Yeah, I think it went, what it says in, what it says is that his note said that it, from 10,806 to 3,600. So that would be $7,206. If my map is right, which it's usually not. And then the other one was, the last one, replacement of technology, equipment technology. Again, I don't know if this was, because we were going to ask Steve about those laptops and stuff, and I don't know if that was.
I thought, yeah, he was going to come in and.
I did take out 30 computers today, bringing it down $6,600. So what is the total?
So that line should be 37,400.
They proposed?
Yep. Instead of 44,000.
And computer software as well, that was also up.
That one actually is up a little bit more as of today, because we just heard from the Department of Ed that a software system that's currently provided for free, that we rely on a lot for managing student data, will now be a charged service starting next year. So that is up 2108 today.
Sorry, I didn't get the number, 37.
37,4.
37,4, down the bottom.
So, Mr. Robert came in and said we had like 439 or 69 student-ready computers for 379 kids. I don't remember what that number is. We're going to be down another 20 kids next year. And I know that some of you will sit there and argue, but I said we were going to be at 380, and we were at 379. So we need all of those computers, another 90 computers, considering that we're going to drop 20 more kids. We dropped 30, and we're going to drop 20 more in this, for this year. If you just look at the kids going out, and again, and our average kindergarten coming in, so divide that by eight, eight grades.
Well, not eight, I would probably say four or five grades. And it's going to only be a certain amount of computers per student in each class.
But we have, we have 1.3 computers for every single student in this school.
And 1.3, like.
And that's not counting the teachers and all of the others in the office.
We bought computers three years ago, right? Those 120, those 100, whatever amount of computers that we bought are outdated. They've been beat up. They need to be replaced. I would probably say, two years from now, you're going to see that number from 90 probably go down to 70 and reflect. But we have a whole bunch of computers that are out of date.
So Steve was basing this on disposal of equipment in the technology plan. Computers are recommended to be replaced after five years. To equally replace computers year to year would require 20% of the inventory to be replaced. So he is basing it on a student population of 400 and a staff and administration population of 50. So 20% of 450 is 90.
So some of these are for staff? Some of these 90 computers? I mean, that's my next question, is why are we buying computers? I did the math. It looks like 26 divided by 120 is $220 a computer. And yet, then we're four NEC tutors that we're spending $600 a piece for.
They have a different computer.
Three times as much.
Bottle, and I'm not sure why.
So you got your basic computer that the kids use, that it's a very simple computer that all they do is, they're on the Internet, they're doing their.
We didn't buy the very simple.
I mean, they're very, they're a basic computer. Like, this computer right here, that is a $900 computer. All right? The computers that they have, right, are 200, and they don't do any, they don't, won't compete with this, when it comes to running programs, the software that the teachers need to use, which the kids will never be able to touch. So there's a difference between a basic computer and a business computer. And a teacher needs a business computer.
So I was at Staples. I mean, they don't even have computers like that. I mean, they have all kinds of 3, 4, $500 computers. I mean, those are not computers?
Yeah, but they're basic.
Basic.
Basic computers, yeah. They're a minimal function.
I'm just trying to understand, what would a NEC tutor need such a fancy $900 or $600 computer for?
It'd actually be 800.
2,400.
Yeah, 600, sorry.
If we have 380 students and 50 staff, not 400 students and 50 staff, we wouldn't be needing 90 computers. We would be needing 80 something.
I can't imagine needing, under any conditions, 90 computers. I mean, if we bought.
Why don't we reduce it to 80?
About 60, but, I mean, you guys can do what you want. I just, I mean.
I think 80 seems reasonable, considering the declining population.
We did have five new students start last week, just to give you a sense of the fluidity of our student population.
Still more computers than kids, though.
Bree's been here just a few months, but I've been here for quite a few years, and I can tell you, I've been watching this, the student population in a given year go. It is fluid, and you're right. And next week, you'll lose four, you know? Basically, you have to take your best guess, and it was very clear last year that we were going to end up with 380 students, and we did. And it's pretty darn clear that we're going to end up with 360 students next year, and I'll bet you, I'll be here. So we'll see.
So what if we reduce this line to $30,000, which is what about what it is in the current budget right now? And if at the end of this year, we have any excess.
We have any left over, if we can add a few more.
He can come to us like he did this past year, and we can pick up something.
I like it.
Out of that.
Is that a motion you're making, Barbie?
That's a motion.
I, I agree, but the four SMARTboard upgrades for classrooms, that needs to be upgraded. Those things, if those things shut down.
Well, if he's got $30,000, I mean, he can, he can, there's, I mean, there's.
Do whatever you want within that line item with it.
You guys will probably have a heart attack, but there are schools in New Hampshire that don't have SMARTboards, you know?
Yes, we know.
Doing quite well. All right, sorry. And I like SMARTboards.
More discussion?
Let's just blow the SMART.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm saying aye for now, but I mean, I'm fine. I still looking at the budget.
Shane? No. On page 15, I would like to make a motion to half the school board salaries. I actually didn't even know that you got a salary when you ran for this position. When they made me fill out the paperwork, I was like, "For what?"
No, we didn't do this to get rich, did we?
Certainly not. I mean, I have here, what about halving or getting rid of this totally, but, you know, I'll at least start with a motion to halve it. To 5,200.
You're not going to get a second for me, and for years, I didn't take it. You know, if you don't want it, don't take it. It's very simple. We have a selectment that doesn't take his salary. You can just say, "I don't want to take it." And this board, not with any of you on it, for years, they'd say, "Well, where are we going to come up with money?" I say, "Well, I know where there's $2,500 we could spend for that," you know, and whatever. I did it for a long time.
Oh, because that's.
You should let people make their own choice.
Yeah.
Okay, because then there was two lines that I wanted to combine into another one, because I didn't know what the police were.
I wanted to know that, too.
Details.
You got a big $600 and some dollar detail?
For what, though, for us, like, for school board, what were the police for?
Deliverative sessions.
Yeah, deliverative sessions.
Yeah, we got to be there.
Yep.
So how come we didn't use any in last year?
We just used some in this manifest right here. $270, 67 times 3. What's 67 times?
Yeah, but the 15, 16 school, you already used it.
That was the open house.
Open house, that came. It was going to be another one for the track.
I don't know why it wasn't built 15, 16.
Okay.
Sometimes things are just put in the wrong line.
Okay.
Yeah, that would, it might have been taken out of the schools.
And then the travel reimbursement, it looks like we've never used that.
We do put, I'll make sure.
But I want to go to Hawaii this year.
On $250?
Well, it'll help.
Advertising and legal notices, we spent $900, $200, and now our budget is $1,400.
Yeah, I looked at that, but think of what we want to start putting more into the Sun. I couldn't remember the name of it. You know, we want to do more, you know, we've talked about putting more stuff into the Sun and everything like that. That is going to cost us more money and.
Not an article.
An article doesn't cost anything. So if you want.
Yeah, anybody can write a letter in for free.
Can I?
We've seen that.
Don't you?
Never seen one.
So I would reduce that to.
This isn't the printing, like, printing?
No.
No? So I don't know why it went up.
I'd reduce it to 700.
Well, I just wondered why it was 963 and 212. Can we just find an answer on that?
Well, I think the advertising and legal notices, it depends on what you're doing. I mean, the year that we had the first teacher retirement buyout, we had an additional legal notices that were going out. So it depends on what you're doing and how you're doing it.
I still say reduce it to 700, and if you guys are short, you can have my salary back.
I second that.
Thank you.
700?
Yep, thank you.
You didn't vote?
We did.
Oh, we did?
Aye. Pretty much. Shane, you okay with that?
So we don't know the SAU expenses yet, right?
No, that'll be done at the next board meeting.
On page 16, what is election day expenses? I'm just curious what that is. Obviously, we're using it, I just don't know what for.
Election day what?
What is that? It says election day expenses.
Well, we have expenses on election day.
That's what I'm asking. What is, what are they?
Coffee, donuts.
Really?
No.
The printing.
Where is this?
The ballots.
We've got ballots and printing.
Oh, thank you. So I just wondered what it was.
We have to do our share.
That's what I said, we're using it, I just didn't know for what. I was curious.
Also, on the annual report, we have to pay our share of that, too. You know, that book?
Oh, yeah.
We have to pay our share of that.
I see, thank you.
Anything else on 16?
Oh, dues and fees, that's your, that's your favorite.
I'm not in the mood tonight.
You're not in the mood?
Talking about dues and fees, that's just craziness. I think when I do my budget, so I took out the, yeah, I took out the 3,400 or whatever it was for the New Hampshire School Board Association. And what I, I have a budget I was working on, but I didn't have the answers from Dr. Gudomski, so I'm not done with it. I wouldn't give them a penny.
17.
How much does $500?
Printing. There's a note in there, but. Adding pages to printed agenda planner and handbook.
I also increased that, again, moving towards more of a PBIS Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports model. Posting of expectations is something that is a big part of that framework, and you can see in the library, for example, right now, we have a fairly basic posting of our behavioral matrix. This increase would allow us to get a more professional and refined poster for each classroom and common area.
Was there any changes made to Ms. Young's contract versus Ms. Dayplace? Could I have a copy of Ms. Young's contract sent to me, please?
I don't think there were any changes.
You remember that issue about getting board approval when she traveled out of state to California or something? It never happened?
I was like, "Did she print too much?"
Just wondering if that's still in there or if you changed it.
Should be showing that.
All right, I'd like a copy of the contract, and the assistants, too, please, so I can put them in my file.
I'm thinking about Hawaii, so.
Well, she came pretty close, she got to California, San Diego, I think.
On page 18 yet?
18?
Community use of facilities wages. I don't know, I just want to know what that is. We're not using it.
So if you, you have revenue side of the budget, you have an expense side of the budget, the board decides what they're going to charge certain organizations for facilities use. Some of those, if they have kitchen use, if they need a custodian, it comes out of that expense side.
Is it always 2,000? Because we're not spending that.
Well, your actual last year was like 1350. You don't know what your actual is this year yet.
Yeah, it's a bit of a moving target. We could take, we could take 500 off that and.
I would, 1,500 would be.
I will say that the new town rectorator has put in a facilities use request for just about every weekend forever, so just keep that in mind.
I mean, the other, the other part of it, Scott.
Say that again? The new town.
Rectoror has requested facilities use on Saturdays.
Did you say he? Because I thought it was a she.
She, I don't think I used a pronoun.
All right.
But do we have to have? Oh, sorry.
The other piece of that, Scott's right, that it'll come out as an expense, and then if there's any kind of revenue that goes in, it comes in as unanticipated revenue, so. You're just going to have it Saturday.
Could you back up to the, and explain to me the facilities director's salary?
Where's that?
Yes, if you, if you remember last year, because you are on a default budget, the increases were not part of the default budget, and then the board allowed for those raises anyway. So you're coming from, that's why it's showing a 6%, it's really a 3%. Because you gave that, you gave that person 3%, and then the budget for this year includes 3%. So it's existing salary plus 3%.
But he's not getting 6% next year.
No, it's the existing salary plus 3%.
I'm perfectly happy, I think.
It's a similar thing to that confusing salaries ensuing year thing that happens.
But no, it's not a 6%. On page 18, Jocelyn Building Maintenance, there was an adjustment there? There was an adjustment there.
Yep, so I took out... Tom had asked me to put in ten thousand, kind of naively thinking that that would be enough to replace the seven, eight hallway lockers. And then we learned that replacing them would actually be more like thirty-thousand dollars. So then we thought we would keep that ten thousand in there for repairing. And he has decided that repairing them for next year is not needed. Or advise, I guess, worth it. Not that it's not needed, but it's not really worth it. So I took out that ten thousand dollars from that line.
So it's thirty-three, oh-seventy-three now?
So thirty-thousand dollars for lockers?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Thirty-one.
Very expensive.
They just had a bunch at the auction. They couldn't give them away.
Capital market. Not a lot of producers.
State auction.
I see seating.
Anything on nineteen? Did you have an adjustment there, Jocelyn?
I did. I added five-hundred-and-forty dollars to rubbish removal. Right now, we have our recycling picked up every other week. And with Fresh Picks, we are producing a lot more recyclable material. The salad's coming in plastic clam shell containers. And we're not currently recycling those because we just don't... With the bi-weekly pickup, don't have the holding capacity to house all that stuff. So we're looking to increase recycling pickup to one time a week next year so that we can recycle more and be greener.
I had a question on the grounds maintenance. I just look at the two years past and then the current budget and then...
Which line is that?
The grounds maintenance, twenty-six-thirty, five-four-three-oh.
I think the actuals were based on not being able to find somebody to do that work versus what was actually needed.
Yeah, I wondered about the wages as well, 'cause that also was lower. And then the current budget is higher. I just wondered what we were using.
Where are we?
I knew that the wages would be lower because I know that they had trouble finding the help. The maintenance itself was some of that because we had done the fields and stuff like that. Do you know, Tim? Is that what part of...
I'm sorry, what?
On the grounds maintenance?
Yeah.
So fourteen-fifteen is like twenty-nine thousand. Fifteen-sixteen is sixteen thousand. Sixteen-seventeen is only forty-six hundred. And then that's forty-six hundred for this year. That's like a huge decrease.
Now, the grounds maintenance...
They moved it.
The grounds maintenance, at the end of the year, when you've done some work on your ball fields, I believe, a couple of years ago, you did some work on a fence.
The drainage.
It had to be put in the appropriate line. It was unexpended funds, so that's why you've got twenty-nine thousand dollars in there.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Forty-six hundred dollars is the, kind of, the normal grounds maintenance. And again, as you expend unexpended funds, you need to put it in the appropriate line.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that that's what it was.
As far as fuel oil goes, we're in the process of putting out an RFP to see, again, if we can get some bids in and lock that in as well. So we just carried the same number over for the meantime.
So there's a lot of maintenance that we do in the school. And it seems to me that they really kinda take advantage of us. Have we looked elsewhere? Elevator maintenance comes to mind. There's just...
Bleacher.
Bleacher maintenance, I don't know. I...
Have we had those?
There was a couple of others in here. Oil tank maintenance, which is not real high. Fire alarm is twenty-five-hundred dollars. I just... I see the bills at Yavna. We don't pay anywhere near that. We got an awful lot more buildings. Forty-eight buildings down there. I just... Some of those, I just... In the last five years, have we kind of looked at that to see if there's any areas there we could save? We could get... Put it out and see if we can get a better deal?
I know that we've stressed in the last couple of years about getting multiple bids on anything that we're doing. Specifically for fire alarm service? I don't know, Tim. I'd have to check.
I just... We have a bunch of maintenance in there. We have septic systems. Was it twenty-five-hundred dollars? I dug up thirty-eight septic systems this last summer at Yavna. You know, I'll come for twenty-five-hundred dollars? That's a good deal. I'll tell you whether it's any good or not. That's a heck of a deal.
I can ask the question on all of those. Elevator maintenance.
It's just a whole bunch of it. It's not a lot of money, but it's... I would be surprised if we couldn't save some, you know, a few thousand here and there.
You can find out. On twenty, also, you got your elementary transportation. Special ed transportation, some decreases there.
But that decrease in the buses is only because of the kindergarten.
Which ladder are you talking about?
If we took that back out, that bus would go back in.
That's realized under the elementary transportation.
Yes.
Yeah, there is an offsetting. I mean, obviously, that cost would go back in, but then your salary line for a kindergarten would come back down and your para line would come back down. So there's a bit of an offset there. Any questions on twenty-one?
I just had a question on twenty-one on the field trips. Is it... And I should've looked at the whatever it is. But is it two-hundred dollars a trip also for class trips? You know, 'cause it's two-hundred dollars for the athletics trips.
For transportation? I don't know. I'd have to check.
I think they charge by the mile. So like, if it's field trips, so... I'm assuming our athletic events are fairly close by where I feel. So I do think it varies.
Okay. That's what I was thinking was, after reading that contract, I read it like once or twice, but... Okay.
Have we talked to Fresh Picks about next year?
Yeah, we just got the first look at the financials. And the revenue is down a little bit, but we haven't gotten in the federal funding yet either. So we're still trying to get a good handle on exactly what that's gonna be. They... I believe they told Marjorie we could figure on a four percent increase. But again, that's gonna really depend on how the revenue comes in. And I think we're gonna have a better handle on that in another month or so.
So four percent of four thousand dollars is not a lot of money, but in here, it's forty-three thousand dollars. How are we gonna... I mean, if we said it was...
It's five percent in here.
I forget what the person that's doing the paperwork... Was that six thousand?
Yes.
So approximately totaled, the cost to us should be around... Somewhere around, give or take, five hundred dollars, ten thousand dollars, not forty-three.
Well, we tried to put the expenses in as it relates. And it's, you know, like I said, I can't... It's a moving target right now. We need to get some more experience with the food service coming in with the finances. We're still early in the school year. All we've got is September and October so far.
And I understand that. I'm just...
What is our current?
There's a huge difference between ten thousand and forty-three thousand dollars.
Absolutely, there is.
I'm just, you know, trying to figure out how we're going to address that.
What is our current? What are we... What is it, a hundred-and-forty-three?
Current what?
That we're paying them?
Well, I would think that, you know, we've... I wouldn't feel comfortable changing any of these numbers now, but certainly by December, you know, then we'll have four months of experience and be able to get a better reading from them. I mean, they're on a one-year contract, so they need to come up with definite numbers for us to budget.
Yes, exactly.
So we'll have those conversations and try to pin them down to a better...
You know, they're in other schools. They must have this problem in other schools that they need a number for budgeting.
Well, especially the first year. I mean, after the first year, you have some history, but the first year, you have no history, so...
Right, okay. Speaking of contracts, how are we doing with Northwood School Bus? Has there been any more back and forth on that?
Same as last meeting. I mean, we haven't got any headway on the bus yet. We're still missing one route. And we have had no more conversations about the plates.
Yeah, she was... That wasn't ever gonna work. So are we having a lot of kickback from parents on what we're doing right now?
I've heard some. Hour rides. Hour change is gonna help because it'd be more... It'd be light out now, but...
Light out in the morning?
This is coming from parents saying they... The kids are... I'm sure it's not an hour, but, you know, they have to get up so early to be there for the bus. And the kid is there for so long in the bus in the morning that they're like, "You know what? It's better for me to drop them off at school." So people... And I don't know if that's the norm, but there are some parents that have spoken to me about it, 'cause I'm there every morning outside usually, so...
The bus's arrival time to school in the morning is a challenge as well. They're... The last three buses are often getting here at seven-forty-eight. So kids who eat breakfast are getting to class that much later. Starting their learning that much later.
Which is a result of the loss of a bus?
I would assume so, yes.
And so that we're not caught with our pants down as usual regarding the bus routes, are we talking to her about the possibility of reversing the one bus route going into Sherburn Hill and Ridge Road?
We haven't had that conversation yet. I believe she said that she was gonna look into that for the start of the next school year.
Right. But things move along. All right. I'm sorry, I know we're off track.
What page are we on?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, you've got your tuition numbers in there.
Question about that?
Yep.
According to the headmaster this afternoon, their current enrollment is two-forty-three, not two-forty-four. You already have a two percent overage in there. So should that enrollment number not be two-forty-four? It would reduce that line item by fifteen thousand dollars.
That number's gonna be fluid right up until the time that we submit our final budget. I mean, if we get three move in, then we're gonna add to it. If we get three move out, we're gonna take it off, so...
As I said, I checked what the number was today, and I just wondered if it was what was in here.
Plus the fifty's... The ninth graders coming in from us. So... But... And I just signed two more.
We just signed two more tonight. So like I said, it's gonna be a...
I'm sure that's what he gave me this afternoon when I asked for the current.
But he doesn't know about our enrollment.
Oh.
You know? And I don't even know if fifty's correct for the eighth grade right now. If that's... We could have more than that. I don't even know.
Usually, what we do is, right up until the time that we bring our budget forward, we'll look at the enrollment and adjust that number accordingly. I mean, it's the only way we can do it. It's a moving target.
There's some things that I keep in files and enrollment reports are one. Sometimes it reminds me of... And I'll show you. I mean, they're right. It's all over. But generally speaking, it stays from year to year. You can pretty much figure it out. But that's why we have the reserve account.
Have we reached out to the homeschooled?
I haven't yet, no.
Going into ninth grade.
Eighth grade.
Yeah, going into...
I'm gonna take over. The special ed section.
Go ahead while I'm writing.
Yeah, that's what I thought I'd do. So we're gonna jump down to the special education section. I think we've split the high school and elementary school costs out enough where I can remove those notes now, 'cause we have history. So we'll take those out. The first line are your aid wages. And then your ESY budget. Your contracted services. You have no special ed tuition at other public schools. It's covered in the regular ed tuition. And you have your enrollments. And your out-of-district placements. I'm gonna go on to page twenty-four. There are your transportation numbers for both regular ed and special ed. You'll see there was a reduction in the elementary special ed transportation, then pretty much a shift over to high school.
Any questions for me?
So as we move through the budget process, I mean, I'd like to clean up your budget more and more every meeting. So what do you want me to do with the curriculum director position? What do you want me to do with kindergarten position? Again, we'll continue to have the... Jocelyn and I continue to have the discussion on that other teaching position and try to see if that's a possibility.
I'm putting in a budget.
Putting what in the budget?
Full-time curriculum director.
And what about kindergarten?
Kindergarten, I mean, it's seventy... Not when I say it's only, but it's sixty-five thousand dollars.
You wanna put it on a warrant?
I guess the thing, too, is like, I look at the salaries, and you're getting rid of two teachers, but you're not really getting rid of two teachers.
Because you're getting a kindergarten teacher and you're getting an aide. And so you're not getting rid of the teacher.
That's what you're saying, you're getting rid of another teacher. You're actually...
You're actually adding one.
Well, no, you're not adding one. You're just... You're only getting rid of one instead of getting rid of two. Do you know what I mean? It's like...
Let's say reducing, not getting rid of.
Yeah, sorry.
Absolutely, I mean...
Or taking them out of the budget.
Really, I feel like...
Yeah.
I was talking about the... As it stands right now in our staffing, reducing... I mean, the kindergarten and the para that goes along with the kindergarten and the curriculum director, that's still up in the air. If you want them in, then yeah, your reduction of two teaching positions, if we do that, is nearly a wash.
And the transportation savings.
But the line, the wages line that's in here right now has the kindergarten teacher in it.
Yes. And I think that that's a really important... I don't wanna see our budget go down. I don't wanna... I want it supported by the school board. I want it supported by the budget committee. I think that we need to sell our budget and make sure that we continue to move forward. But the board needs to decide what they're comfortable with.
I'd like to see the curriculum director as part of the budget. I don't know if it should be full-time or three-fifths. You said we didn't do well with the three-fifths in the last time you tried it.
Well, the curriculum director position is... It's a difficult position to do really well and get what we need accomplished in two days a week or three days a week. I mean, it's disjointed.
Because it gets everything that curriculum's all about.
I mean, it would be one thing if you were sitting by yourself writing curriculum, but that's not what we want a curriculum director for. I mean, they need to interact in the classrooms and with the teachers and get them involved in everything. So it's a difficult, inclusive position to do in a fragmented manner.
The... May I?
Yeah. The problem with writing curriculum is it needs to be process-oriented and not product-oriented. We could hire somebody two days a week to write a product, but it's the process of working with the staff that ingrains the behavior into the staff so they can unwrap standards, so they can... You understand.
I do.
So, it's just a tough thing to do in a, in a part-time kinda way. I can tell you that I tried, as part of focus monitoring, to spend some time process-wise, working with people on developing the curriculum standards for language arts. It was really difficult to do because my position's fragmented, you know what I mean? I couldn't commit to being here all the time because I can't. So, you know, we just had this discussion this morning in the curriculum instruction assessment group for the Southeast Superintendent Association. You're not the only one that struggles with this. But it's how, how do you get those processes down with a fragmented approach? It's really hard and to do.
And if the answer is that, that we want those two things in there and reduce the budget to a certain level, we'll go back in and we'll get to that certain level and identify to you what we're gonna be missing because we will be missing things. We will have to take things out, whether it's technology or other areas. I mean, something, we don't, we don't just cover $134,000 without having to take things away because it's not coming out of your, it's not coming out of your high school budget. It's not coming out of special ed, it's not coming out of transportation. So, you know, we'll have to look at the K-8 and try to find it.
If we go back, if you go back with the budget, with the changes that we made tonight, leave the curriculum director and take the kindergarten out, can we see what that would look like?
We can do whatever the board wants to do.
I would like, so, I would like, so I'm just throwing this out there as one thing, is to find out about those four homeschooled kids because that's $60,000 right there. Well, plus the 2% increase on that. And I know- That's what I was gonna say, is I, I don't know how much is in our reserves because then, how much are we gonna put back into our reserves? Because we've had, what, now 18 students come into Co-Brown, but again, for this year.
But remember, you're only tapping into that reserve if you over, over expend your budget.
Right.
And if you cover it, then you don't have to tap into that reserve. So, that would still be available for next year. So, if you wanted to budget tighter, I mean, I've said it before, it makes me nervous. But if you wanted to budget tighter and, you know, I, I am going to call the homeschooled students in eighth grade because those are the ones that normally either come or not, and try to get an answer there. But, you know, like this year, we've had a lot of students moving in. If you cover them in your budget, then you're okay. If not, you've got the, you've got the reserve for the tuition. We can do that, I mean, we can cut it as tight as we can.
Now, the two alt-ed students here are the same two alt here?
Where are you?
Sorry, on page 23.
Is that what we have now, is two alt-ed students?
No, you have six. I need two Co-Brown's tuition to run that program. So, I put two alt-ed students, that's, and maybe I need to be clear.
Okay, yeah, that makes more sense, okay.
So, the way I have it structured, and sometimes it's a little gamble, if I have two tuitions, I can cover the expenses of the program. You have six kids from Northwood, you have Les from Stratford, but you do have kids from Stratford, and you do have kids from Nottingham.
She's got quite a few kids right now.
I got like, yeah, yep. And they're not removals, they're, I mean, we could talk about what they are in non-public, I'd be happy to do that.
No, I don't care. I, I mean, I don't, it's not that I don't care, that's not my issue. My issue, I would like to know, and I, I'm hoping that's been portrayed to you, we're hoping that in our monthly enrollment report that we get an alt-ed count.
I'm putting it both places. It's in my director's report each month, and it'll be in your enrollment report each month.
Thank you.
So, the, the two alt-ed kids pay for the alt education program?
The total program costs, 50% of it's covered by the IDEA grant for the identified students.
Right. So, these plus two additional students under 12-
I mean, where, you don't have, you can take, I just don't know where you wanna pay for your alt ed kids.
No, 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 but what I'm asking is, no, 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 what I'm asking is, what is the, what are these two additional students down here?
I think that Erica puts in a two-student cushion. You could remove that.
But these ones, we don't wanna move, remove because they're paying for that program.
Correct.
That's what I'm asking, okay.
Correct.
We agreed at the joint school board, probably just before you got on board, that we would allow the money to follow the child. That was a joint board, school, joint school board decision.
For the alt-ed program.
For the alt-ed program. So that they had the money they needed to fund the program. So, I don't have a problem with that. I just would like to know on a regular basis how many kids we have in alt-ed.
Yeah.
Just, just so I'm not surprised.
It's on my director's report this month. It's right on page, whatever. And Nancy will put it on the enrollment report, and if anybody wants any-
I don't save your enrollment report, but I do save the, I, I know they're very important. I didn't mean that in a negative way. But I do save the enrollment reports, I have years of them.
Yep.
So, the curriculum director and full-day K.
I'd still like to keep them in.
I'm, I have no skin in the game, so I'm not answering.
Me?
Yeah.
I think you should put the kindergarten on a warrant again. I think it's, it's less money, I think they thought about it a little more. They cost it, you know, costed it out better. I think it's more palatable. But-
If we do that, you, you're playing with that transportation. If it doesn't pass, then that money goes right back into the budget. So, we still have to-
We solve the budget for it. Yeah.
I just wonder what the difference would be.
We're actually adding 133,000 plus whatever the bus contract is.
Thirty-
Thirty-six or whatever.
And the kindergarten is 67, so it's actually only adding 30.
Well, kindergarten is more like 106, less a bus run.
No, the numbers that they gave us last, last time were like-
I say you leave-
Nine or something like that, minus the bus runs.
No, it should be right around 100, I think we came up with around 104, 105.
It was right in there, yeah.
For the teacher and the para, and then, and then minusing the 30, I think it was 36 savings for the midday bus to come right around 65.
I think we can get away with putting the kindergarten in the budget this year.
How?
By showing that where it's only, we're only raising $65,000 and playing with the budget to-
By making the default budget more. That's how you do it.
Yeah.
So, you, whatever our budget is, you make the default budget more and then vote for our budget.
And the, the kid, before we get that, I, get that full-time kindergarten in there, and we'll work on the full-time curriculum director next year. And I, I think it will pass if we get the full-time kindergarten and just leave it in there. If we're asking for, I could just hear now, you want a full-time curriculum director and all-day kindergarten? That budget ain't gonna pass, ain't gonna pass.
I, I would almost rather, if, I think the curriculum director needs to be in one or, one or the other. I mean, we tried to split. I think it, it was a good try, but it confused the issue a little bit. I, I think that, I think that it should either stay in your budget or pull it all out of your budget and put it on a warrant article. I, I don't, I don't really feel good about splitting it and having any success there.
What do you mean, splitting the two?
Well, last year we put part of it in the budget and part of it in a warrant article, and, and I, I just think that in itself probably confused some people, so. Maybe we, maybe we put it all in a warrant article and, and try to do our best with educating the public as to the importance of it.
I'm worried about no means no.
No means no at that point.
Yeah.
What I, what I hate about this is that the fact that I'm more worried about passing a budget and, and then the education of the kids. You know, it's like, okay, let's, let's find a way so the budget passes instead of actually thinking about what they actually could need.
I don't think that's actually accurate, though. I think we're trying to pass a budget with a curriculum director in it.
And if we can get the full-time curriculum director in there, but at 133,000 plus that full-time kind, the transportation, the half-day transportation with the kindergarten, you're at $170,000 right there. And they get that below the default budget to pass the full-time curriculum director, ain't gonna, I don't think it's gonna pass.
Well, how about this? I mean, the curriculum director is a, it's a, it's, it's a pretty defined amount of money. So, how about I take the curriculum director out of your budget, leave the full-day kindergarten in your budget, and we'll see where that comes out? And then, at the next meeting, I mean, this isn't done, so. At the next meeting, you'll have another crack at a discussion as to, do you think you can put it back in and, and cut some more and live with that, or do you wanna leave it? I mean, we've gotta do something to get a number here.
I would've done the exact opposite. I would've left the curriculum director in and taken the kindergarten out.
Can I just?
You think?
Angry over what?
Can we reduce that?
Well, we have a better idea-
The curriculum director is gonna benefit more students.
You put either one in the budget, that's why I'm gonna be angry, that's why I'm gonna be angry.
All right, Gary.
A better idea what the default budget's gonna be like next time?
Yeah, the, the default budget, it, it's, it still has work. I know people think that it's, it's, there's no gray area. There is gray area in a default budget. And I would say 90% of it is cut and dry, and then there's 10% of the lines that need some discussion.
We on the default budget now?
What's that?
I just asked, I just asked the question, do we think that the default budget will be more solid for, for our next?
Yeah, I would encourage, I would encourage if there's a couple of board members that wanna come over and sit with Marjorie and I and literally go line by line like we do and have a discussion about the lines in question, that would be a healthy conversation.
Well, the first line, if you look at the first line, it matches last year's budget. When in fact, because of a lot of movement in teachers, by contract, we're gonna spend 67,000.
Actually, Tim, can I just clarify something?
Sure.
The 1388 number, is that what you're looking at?
Mm-hmm.
That's this year's budget.
All right, this year's budget, yeah, so.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so they use the 1388 on, on both. But because of a lot of movement in teachers, if you look at this year's financials, if you don't have one, I have one here, it's 68,000 or whatever, less that we're gonna spend by CBA contract on teachers, plus FICA and everything else. I mean, so, so right off the bat, I, I didn't go any further than that. That, that number's off the 68, $320 or whatever.
And that's a line that we knew we needed to have further discussion on. I mean, that, that was, that, we understand.
Well, I mean, she, she, correctly so, as near as I can tell. She, she has that line in our financials that we just got at our last meeting. She, she has how much we've spent and how much is covered, and exactly how much is gonna be left over, which is the 68, 320 or whatever it is. Simply because, based on what we have now, and we all know, we had a number of higher-paid teachers leave and a number of lesser-paid teachers come in.
This is, this is the conversation that you'll have when you have a default budget because it kicks back to the previous year's budget. So, the conversation is, should that number be there? I understand the contractual obligations, but you've got a sum of money that's in that line and it kicks back to the, the previous year's budget. I mean, it's just like if you're reducing a position for next year and you get the-
It kicks back to the previous year's contractual agreement, yeah.
If, if you're reducing a bu, a position for next year's budget and you get the default budget, you get that position back.
We don't have to fill it.
You don't have to fill it, but you get the money back.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's the, that's, this is, those are the type of things that I think it's really healthy and I, I would encourage, and I'm not being sarcastic. I would encourage a couple of board members, if you're interested, come over and sit with Marjorie and I. We go line by line for the default budget, and 90% of our lines match up. And then, 10% of the lines, we need to have a discussion as to whether it goes in the default budget or stays out. And it's a real, it's a good conversation.
And then when they don't agree, they come and, I get to be the spoiler. So, you could join me for the spoiler.
But the default budget does need to have more conversation, more attention. And I, I would welcome anybody that wants to come over and go through the exercise. It's a good learning exercise.
There's no still, no mean no still after that?
It's on the warrant, the warrant.
It's on the warrant.
Warranted items.
So, if we don't do another warrant for something, we could technically put that, use that if, because that money that we have left over, right?
Yeah, if it's a warrant, it's no means no.
But if there's no warrant this year, say, for kindergarten.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and then we reduce that salary line by-
If your default budget would be higher?
Hundred thousand dollars.
If your default budget is higher and you, you, you get your default budget at that point in time, I think your train of thought is that you could pay for your full-day kindergarten. It's kinda rolling the dice.
Right, if your default budget's higher than your regular budget, you're gonna get your regular budget. I can't imagine town people-
I think that what I-
They look at the number.
Right.
I mean, what I would suggest, again, I think that, that I would suggest just for getting us someplace where you get numbers more accurate that you can look at, take the curriculum director out, we'll keep it on the side, we'll have the cost for that, we'll have the price for that. You'll see where your budget is at that point. I mean, you've got some, you've got some huge fluctuations in there with the tuition and the transportation and, and then you've got the reduction of the, of the bond. So, that'll give you a number, and then you can have this same conversation at your next meeting with a little bit more accurate numbers. And hopefully by then, you'll have a closer, more accurate default budget because I know that needs work. I told you that leading off.
So, what's the latest date?
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Your question that I never really answered?
Sure.
On the tuition Co-Brown and the tuition differential with the two extra students in it?
Yeah.
I just wrote down, we're gonna remove those two extra students out of the special education section.
What, one line and page, so I can mark it on this one?
Uh... 1205-563. Page 38.
That's the cushion?
Taking what off?
We're just gonna take the two students, the two dips. We're gonna remove the two students.
Your duty, yes, okay.
Because if you look, you're not doing it up here, so why would we have to do it down there?
Do you have water bubblers?
Drinking fountain. You said drinking fountain.
Water cooler.
What the hell's a water cooler?
And then I wrote it.
It cools the water, doesn't it?
Water cooler.
That would take like 12,000.
Take another 12,000.
Okay.
Well, it just sort of scares me, I gotta be honest with you. Like, I know people are talking, I know everybody's listening, but it's like your elementary costs are actually down.
They are down, I guess.
You know that?
Well, and that's why I wanna look at the homeschool ones too because that's not-
Gary's always confused.
Well, I know, so.
Eight conversations going on.
So, just so you know, I just took the two-student cushion out of the special education differential because we didn't put a cushion in the regular ed differential, so why would I put it in the special ed differential? So, that's another 12,000 dollars.
So, how much, so minus 12,000?
Yep.
Have we gotten?
And then, um-
Then they're going to look into the homeschooled also because that's, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get that as tight as, as soon as we get an answer, we'll get it as tight as we can.
Yep.
So, I mean, does that-
Maybe that's 100,000 we've gotten to tonight?
No, you got to like 24.
Yeah.
No, we're not with the cuts we did in the technology and-
Yeah, I don't think we're that far.
You're at like 24.
It's terrible.
So, does that sound-
Better than not being at 24.
Does that sound like a reasonable progression then? Take the curriculum director out for now, have the price, have that discussion, you'll know where this number is.
I-
And our default budget is, is, is going to be-
I'd do it the exact opposite. That's my opinion, though, and there's three other people here who can-
Well, how would the board like to do this because we-
Well, I think what he's saying, though, is that because the, the curriculum director is a set number that's like, it's like a, it's like a set area, that's why he's saying take that out. Leave the kindergarten in because it's broken out into multiple sections. Do you know what I mean? It's like, it's under, you know, paras, it's under teachers, it's under supplies, it's under buses.
The kindergarten's gonna be about 65,000 in your budget. So, if you come to the next meeting and, and you're, you know, within $80,000 or $60,000 of where you wanna be, and, and you wanna put it back in, you could interchange and put the curriculum director in and take the correct, uh, the kindergarten out, and that's gonna cost you an additional $65,000, $70,000.
But that's why he's saying take the, the curriculum director out because it's one, it's like its own section, and it's easier just to take that section out.
Yeah, I don't care if it's easier, if it doesn't do what we want it to do, though, I mean-
Quite frankly, the history of, and people can disagree or correct me. The history of, of Northwood the last couple of years, I think there was a larger push for full-day kindergarten than there was for the curriculum director, so.
But it also sounds like the support-
And I want to vote, so.
Voting-wise?
I think so.
Well, I'd have to look at that.
Oh, I think the first time you had your kindergarten war-
Full-day kindergarten lost bigger last year than the year before, for sure.
Yeah, but the curriculum director got killed too.
Yeah.
Well, I, I agree-
Yeah, well, I, I agree.
Really?
So I'm just trying to get you closer to a number, so.
No, and I understand. I, I just, I, I personally believe that it's not the curriculum director, it's not the all-day kindergarten, it's how you're going to pay for it. And if you're going to raise the budget, it ain't going to work if they can figure out how to make it not work. And that's up to you.
If you put them both in the budget, but you can make a budget of eleven-eight, or eleven-something.
Our K.A. budget is down, last I looked, thirty-five thousand dollars, so I, you know, if, if we're going to cover, if we're going to cover-
Your K.A. budget is what?
The K.A. budget is-
Oh.
The sad thing here is your elementary budget's down.
Well-
The eighty-six plus the cuts. It's your high school cost, instead of driving the bus, no pun intended.
If that continues, someday we'll have to look at that.
I'm not saying anything bad about that, it's just the reality of the situation is that with those kids moving in this year, it's just like, through your budget.
So how would you like your budget brought back to you?
With the full-time kindergarten, put it in, curriculum director take out. On the side, not saying we're taking it out and pushing it away, we're actually just want to look at numbers with the full-time kindergarten.
All right, I'm hearing one on this side and one on that side, so.
Got two others who haven't said anything.
Why, why can't, I think it's just pushing a few buttons, I'm sorry. Do both.
Take them both out?
No.
Compare both?
Take one out, and make a budget.
And take the other one out and do a second budget.
Then take the other one out and make a, put that back in and make the other one out and make a budget.
I mean, I can do that, but the curriculum director is, I can make you two budgets.
I mean, I, I don't have any, I'm not asking, I'm just, but you could.
I could.
You know, if you wanted to make her happy and him happy, that's what you could do.
That's a great-
I'd rather make the board happy.
In the middle there.
Half the board doesn't seem to care today. Which would you prefer?
No, I care.
It's not true. Do you want either of them in the budget or not?
No, I think all their positions-
I say take them both out, we know how much they cost out.
And take them both out, and then we'll have a nice budget.
Take them both out. No, what I'm saying is, if we know what the bottom line of both of them is, take them both out.
Is it? Which opinion is that?
Yours.
And then, look at what the bottom line really is without both of them.
If you took them both out.
It would.
That's your opinion.
It wasn't my opinion three seconds ago, but now I'm, if you take them both out, what does the budget look like then? And then you put them both on a warrant again, and then they both fail again.
You know, honestly, it's just a matter of a few minutes to sit home at the dining room table and fill up the dining room table with all your paperwork, and do this.
And my three budgets.
And then your daughter will come in and yell at you because she can't set the table for dinner.
I don't have a dollar.
Well, I do.
And don't forget the bus.
She gets awful upset with me.
So two hundred thousand.
Fill my dining room table up with school board paperwork.
The cost is sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five plus one-thirty-three. Two hundred thousand dollars.
All right, so I've got one over here and one over there, and two budgets.
So what I'd like to see is somewhat what you said, but I don't want the warrant article part of it. I'd like to see the budget without the full-day kindergarten, without the curriculum director, because we know what they're going to cost.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to see what the bottom line is going to be.
And then we can-
And then we can decide from there.
Let's do that. That's the easier thing to do, out of all three of the things we just discussed.
But I'm not saying, right.
Plus our corrections today.
Right, with all of the corrections from today. Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Me too. Does that make sense?
All right. Just so I'm clear.
Yep, make the corrections from today.
So K's coming out.
Yep.
Curriculum director is coming out.
Yep.
Make the changes we talked about.
Yep.
And we can decide what we're going to do with those two.
Yep.
And in the meantime, we'll have a continued discussion on the default budget.
Yes.
Okay.
And that teacher that-
Are there, are there any other additions, deletions, comments on the budget? Because I, again, each time you look at this, I want it closer and closer.
When does it have to be to Budget Committee?
You have to have it ready to give us on the third of December.
Yeah, tenth of December.
But really, we only have one more look at it, unless we have a special meeting. So it's not each time we look at it, we got one more time to look at it, unless we have a special meeting.
I think we should have a special meeting. I'd like two more looks. I think that's reasonable.
So are we all good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Are you okay with that, Tim?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Shane? Bree?
Yes.
There's our director for tonight.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent, you are up.
Before we move to that, the default budget, is there anybody that wants to join us for that exercise?
Yes. We'll need them to have it.
When are you free?
Will you do that? You won't?
Who?
You won't do that, will you?
Oh, come on.
I haven't even gone through the default budget. I got to the first line and gave up.
I will-
I'll look at it.
Let me look at it tomorrow morning.
Okay, shoot me an email and-
Can you do anything Monday?
We can do it.
Possibly. That's what I'm thinking.
Monday, like in the afternoon, like noon to like one-thirty, if you can, do?
Possible. Let me look.
Shoot me an email tomorrow morning, and we can see if Marjorie's free there, too.
Sure.
Because I have a couple of suggestions you made, and I have to-
Is that okay? We'll do public comments early? Tim, are you okay with that?
Yep.
I'm me.
Are you okay? Okay, sure. Public comment?
Thank you.
We're going to do public comment a little, or? We'll probably still do it at the end, too, just in case.
It looks red.
It's red.
It's on.
So going through the, the budget and whatever, very briefly, the way I'm looking at this is, the bond is coming out, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars. We were told at the last Budget Committee meeting that you had a surplus of five hundred and, almost five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that was returned.
I think it's going to be five hundred and six, actually.
Five-twenty-two.
You're looking at a total between the two of somewhere in the vicinity of eight hundred to eight hundred and ten thousand dollars that was not, either was not used this past year, and is not going to need to be budgeted for this year. Based on the figures that I heard tonight, the all-day kindergarten, sixty-nine thousand dollars, because you take out the, the transportation money, one-thirty-four-five for the curriculum director, is two-hundred-and-three thousand and change. I believe you can leave both of those in the operating budget. You've put in, not to exceed, nine-point-three percent on your health insurance. You've never come that close with the increase. The town never goes for the full amount either. If you cut that in half to four-and-a-half percent increase, you're going to save some money. If you don't put the extra students in, but only, only go on actual enrollment for co-brown, based on the December first report, you're going to save some money there. There are this five hundred thousand dollars that you did not spend in last year's operating budget. There are a lot of lines that money wasn't spent on. And yet, I've seen tonight, many of them have increases besides. I really think you can go back through those and save five hundred grand off of the, the proposed budget. And I would urge you to consider that, because a twelve-million-dollar budget, I don't think is going to make it through Budget Committee. I'm speaking for myself. I won't vote for it. And I do think you need to have the kindergarten in the operating budget. I also believe, because it's too confusing for the public to have it as a warrant article for sixty-nine thousand dollars, but if it doesn't pass, you still have the thirty-six thousand in for the transportation line. People will be upset with that. I think they'll vote no, if they understand it. Most people vote no when they don't understand something, so. And I believe the curriculum director is a necessary part of what we have, what we need to have going on here. Personally, I think they should both be in the operating budget, but you can do a lot of trimming on stuff. And that included a hundred and thirty-something wishlist that you had spent at the end of the year, and still had five hundred and some odd thousand that you trimmed back to the town. That's the third year in a row. People aren't going to be happy seeing that kind of an operating budget coming forward. Those are my suggestions. Thank you for giving me the opportunity so that I can go take care of my emergency.
Ginger, did you hear my conversation about Bill Gardner?
No, because I was out with my-
So I just want to mention that to the board real quick, because that's the only, only thing I disagree with her on. In a conversation today, Bill Gardner stated that his recommendation is that Health Trust go away, be disbanded. There, there is some huge problems. I know Bob knows some of them. So there's, there's really a, an uncertainty. And I've asked Bob if he would look into it, what happens if Health Trust goes away? Where does that leave us? You know, we, we approved a teacher contract today, that includes some, some things from them. So I just, I, I don't want to find out two weeks before, I'd like to know what's going to happen if they did go out. And, and they may not, you know, I, they're certainly not going to want to go out. But Bill Gardner, by the way, is the Secretary of State, so we're not talking about a little peon here. And he is, his office is the one who has gotten us all of that money back. And now they want some of that back, and that's the big issue right now. So it might be all political posturing, but there's, there's really some, some uncertainty in the insurance industry for those of us who use Health Trust right now.
Well, I'd just like to make a point of clarification with the five hundred thousand dollars that was sent back to the town, is that some of that was unanticipated revenue.
No, 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 no. Absolutely not. Sorry.
Some of that was the Health Trust money that came back.
Nope, nope, that's unanticipated revenue. That's another, another page. Sorry. But it was a good try. Five hundred and-
So all of it was the, the twelve-point-whatever percent?
All, and, and different teachers, and the, the teacher retirement incentive, and-
Okay, so that would be a thank you to the school board for, and to the administration, not the twelve-point-whatever percent, but that would be a thank you for going out and hiring teachers that maybe are a little less expensive and everything like that. Not a slap in the hand for, for, for doing a, you know, bad job at budgeting. Okay, I'm just saying, it's not a bad job budgeting. We budgeted for what we had at that point.
I, I guess everybody could look at that.
We budgeted for what we had at that point.
If on my own, if on my own, I made a budget, that-
Eighteen months in advance.
Eighteen months in advance, that was a twelve-million-dollar budget that ended up off, because really it was off more like six-hundred-and-fifty-something, six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. That was off six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. I, I'd have been booted out of my store. I'd be gone. I'd be gone.
But you're relying on different, you're relying on outside, oh, anyways, we'll go on to the next thing. Scott, you're up.
Well, let's go onto a happier topic. I've given you a copy of our homelessness, homelessness brochure for homeless youth, in case you want to review that at home. Gives you a description of what we do, and what we're required to do. But I'll go back to my Director's Report on page fifty-six. We're working on gathering data for our timeliness of early transition for the state. Last year, Cobran Northwood Academy was selected for the review of the transition section of the IUPs. All the areas of noncompliance have been corrected at this point. There'll be a follow-up meeting in the near future. I'll update you after that. CBNA is due for full program approval for special education, so they've selected six student files, and I'll update the board on the Department of Ed's finding as it proceeds. Again, I already mentioned I attached our homelessness brochure. I've also attached the Northwood School District's district determinations for the Individuals with Disability Education Act for two thousand fifteen, sixteen. You can see that in your packet. The scores of zero on the rubrics are good scores, ones are bad. There's no ones, there's all zeros. So you guys do great, you met the requirements of the IDEA. We just finished the vetting process for catastrophic aid with the Department of Education. That's when they come back and say we're going to not allow this, and we come back and say, no, this is why you should allow this. So we just finished that yesterday. Mrs. McNeil attended the Transition Network Resource Consortium, which is a really long word for trying to get more services for sixteen-to-twenty-one-year-olds with disabilities. And just so you know, this initiative is funded by a state grant. Last week, I attended the Best Practices in Behavioral Health Conference. I'll be meeting with the guidance and nurses in the future to review the information and possibly make some changes to our services. And Mrs. McNeil had a five oh four training for all the districts, including Northwood and the Northwood Councilors attended. The census is right there. You'll notice that under Jollicor School, there's one more student than there used to be, and that's just about the only change from last month.
Any questions for Mr. Vernon?
We seem to not question this statement. We seem to be ticking back up in special ed. We'd gone down quite a bit, but-
Oh, your numbers are, well, you had six, six total? Are you talking about in, in Northwood, at the elementary?
Just-
You had six special education students move in over the summer. I put that in a previous report. I think, hold on. When I started here, you were somewhere around seventy-three. And now you're at fifty-five. Your out-of-district placements are up a bit, right now.
When I said we seem to be ticking up, I was speaking strictly of budget. The budget is headed north. We were, we had several fun years.
Yeah, we reduced, reduced, reduced. The problem is, is that- You had a student-
I wasn't looking for an explanation. I understand you have more students, I was just making a statement. I didn't ask a question, yeah.
Because I got an answer for you now, publicly.
I know you have an answer, but I mean, it, it just seems like we're-
No, you've definitely had, you've had like three years of-
Yes.
And now you've got a little bit of a bump.
Yep.
I mean, the biggest issue in your budget this year is the, the, the health insurance in special ed is up eighty-four. If you look at the other increases in special ed in your elementary, as opposed to your high school cost, you're relatively even. You know, you've got another thing here, but you've got a reduction here.
Yep.
So, you know, as I look at the budget, it's the cost of the people who are health insurance plus the increase, thirty-four thousand dollars.
Yep, and if something doesn't happen, insurance is going to get far worse. I mean, that's, that's just a given. It's going to get far worse.
Yep. I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, it's just crazy.
Any other questions for that section?
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you all settled with the bills and stuff? I was just gonna-
Oh, yeah. You're up. So I'm going to be brief.
I'm rubber band.
Couple of things that are not included in my report. I just wanted to report that a hundred and eighty dollars was raised for hats for Haiti. So congratulations to Mrs. Royer for organizing a successful fundraiser. Sports awards were last night. Adrian and I were both there. They were well-attended by student athletes and parents. And I'm happy to report that fifty percent about of our student athletes made honor roll or high honor roll. One of the things that is taking up a fair amount of my time, either in terms of working on it or worrying about it, is staffing. Last time you had approved a long-term substitute for a special education teacher, that person emailed me that night and ended up withdrawing from the position. Congratulations to her, she got a position elsewhere, but that leaves us filling that position with daily subs for now, so we have re-advertised that. Mrs. Duffy's leave has started. Art, we do have a successful long-term subplacement there. I think that's the first time I've been able to say that sentence ever. And she is coming in tomorrow to get oriented to the building and get a tour, and she will start Monday, because Mrs. Legassi's leave has started as of today. We are now at three open care professional positions. We have done some interviewing, we did make an offer, it was declined. We are interviewing more next week. On a positive note, Dr. Kavanaugh, Nancy, our curriculum coordinator, started yesterday. She's fantastic, she's jumping right in, visiting classrooms, getting to know teachers. She attended our building leadership team meeting yesterday, and the science committee meeting today. And then also, we are working hard to fill seventh grade English language arts. That has been open for about a month now. We are filling it with daily substitutes, trying to be as consistent as we can with, at least having the same daily substitute in there on consecutive days. We did have some middle school teachers, I'm sorry, Tim, we did have some seventh and eighth grade teachers, not supposed to say middle- not supposed to say middle school, helping with the planning when we naively thought that that would be a short-term situation, and that's not really sustainable for them to do that. So as of this week, I have taken over the planning for 7th grade E.L.A., which is fun, but time-consuming, as you might imagine, so...
Doing a great job of it, too.
Very eager to fill that position. So any questions or comments on staffing?
What is our new curriculum? Did you say Kavanaugh?
Yeah.
Kavanaugh. What is, in interviewing her, what is her ability to work more hours if something changed? Or would we have to find someone else? Because I think somebody said she, if I remember the discussion, she's retired from out-of-state and was maybe...
I think she's quite happy with two days a week right now. I don't think she would want to increase at this time.
That was the question I was asking. Thank you.
I'm hoping that she likes us enough that she would want to stay on if we were to go full-time, though.
Okay. Artist in residence. You said we have a long-term sub for the art?
Yep.
Okay. Have you given any thought to the artist in residence?
Yeah, Melissa Legassi and I have been in discussion about that. She has started to reach out. She was hoping to have something arranged before she went on leave, but she's gone out earlier than anticipated. As it happens, the long-term substitute has served as an artist in residence in other schools. So that might be a relationship we can take advantage of. And certainly, she could also use her network of resources to identify a potential artist in residence.
If you get a chance, take a look at some of the stuff that was done over in Stratford. There's some nice stuff over there.
I gave you just a brief description of what some of the committees are working on. I don't attend every single committee meeting, but I attend a lot of them. And I can say overall, these teams all have great energy and are really dedicated to getting things done and making a difference. And I've been very impressed with what folks are working on, and I'm really grateful for people's dedication. And in relation to your substitute question, in terms of how much money is spent for substitutes for filling non-CBA-related things, in the past, a lot of meetings have been held in the school day, and substitutes have been provided. And Adrian and I have made a very conscious effort this year to move those meetings outside of the school day. So I just want to note that these teachers are working, except in the case of building leadership team that is dipended voluntarily outside of the school day, to do this great work. I also gave you an update on what we're working on curriculum-wise. Staff have been attending meetings at the SAU related to related arts curriculum. Bridges meetings have begun, and as I said, Nancy just started yesterday. Our goal will be to set some goals and communicate those to the board in the next few weeks. You have some updates from Steve and from Tom that are pretty self-explanatory. And then one other thing that just came across my desk today that I wanted to get approval on is Mrs. Ford is asking for permission to sell refreshments during intermission at the place as another fundraiser.
I wish I were Mrs. Ford to be able to sell refreshments.
Flesh?
Refreshments. No flesh, please. I don't think that's in the... Refreshments at the drama presentation of Jungle Book. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Probably too late to ask, but is any of the different groups in school doing anything on Election Day? I mean, we're going to have a lot of people at the church, meaning to make money. Has anybody come up with any... The Drama Club in the past was one group that did quite well at the raffle, at the election, particularly the presidential election gets an awful lot of people.
We would, of course, have brought it to you for approval, so, no.
So I think that wraps up my part, unless there are any questions or compliments. I'll take those, too. Bob, to your science committee? No, specifically your science committee. Thank you for staying on top of the new science standards. I was very glad to hear that you were...
Credit to Jen Lonharth for that.
The, just to let everybody know, this morning, the Department of Ed formally adopted the science standards. I know you've already been working with them, but they were formally adopted this morning in the state.
And she's on it.
Most districts are ahead of the state. Some of the state did it.
I see Mr. Robert more and more. I get like 20 emails an hour now from him. Is he doing more? Or is he just because he's the tech person?
In terms of, like, alert, like, one-call-now-type things?
Uh, no, like, something about 8th grade. It was a lot. Basketball, triathletes, all that stuff.
We funnel all of the, sort of the mass email alerts through him.
Remember getting those in the spring. It's all about delegating.
A lot of it is sports, and the alert now is sports.
Yep.
I've gone so many years and never heard from him, and now all of a sudden, every other day, I get something.
Well, we're also trying to reduce paper as well, so relying a little bit more on the...
We got three printers. We can take one of those out of the budget.
Yes.
Any other questions?
She went awful quiet, awful fast.
Next are policies.
Didn't even have a reaction to that. I don't know.
Ms. Hartford, would you like me to guide the board?
I would love that, Mr. Rooney.
All right, if you turn to page 68, here's your letter from Mr. Christina reviewing your policy manual. If you look at page 69, you'll see that your usernames and passwords are there, and Ms. Bullshane already knows not to put those in the minutes. If you turn to page 70, I'll leave you to review that on your own, and then we'll talk about what our plan should be going forward at a later date. Just in respect for the time. On page 71 are the required policies by law, and you'll see he's made notations if you're missing any. The three that you're missing are in your packet this evening. He also talks about procedural safeguards. Check your special education manual. It's all in there. And your procedural safeguards are well-accessible within the conference room for parents, just to let you know. So those are the policies required by law. Of course, you have a lot more policies than that in Northwood. And we might want to consider doing something about that at a future date, so think about that. But if we go to page 76, these are the policies that are here tonight. You have two for second reading. You have access to minutes in public records. And Tim had a question about that, and I've provided him with the answer. And I'll email the answer out to everybody in the morning, because I gave him my only copy. But his question was basically on paragraph three, which had to do with... All requests for public records must be made through the SAU office. He asked if that was in the right-to-know law. It is not in the right-to-know law. However, it is covered under the duties of the superintendents. And Barrett Christina has made about five recommendations and supported leaving that the way it is. From there, you have another policy for second reading, which is elementary student transportation services, which was a fall update. And then all the other ones are fall updates, with the exception of EFA, ILDA, and JLCK, which are all policies that were missing from your manual.
And they all follow the sample policies.
Yeah, and I also put in here for you, which usually isn't here, I think, maybe.
Sample policy?
Well, we always put the sample policies. But if you turn to page 81, I thought it would be nice if you had the fall updates, the cover sheet from the fall updates, so it shows you why the policy was changed.
Need a motion for, to send these to second reading and first reading?
You could do a motion for the first two to move to approve.
So, motion to approve BEDG-R and EE-A. Second. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
And Tim's abstaining. 3, 0, 1. Send them to first reading? Is that what I'm doing? Or what am I doing with the...
You're sending them to second reading and posting.
So, motion to send to second reading and posting EE-A, EF, E-O, policies. EFA, GBCD, IHBA, IHBAA, ILDA, JJIC, JLCK. Second. Discussion?
Is that all of them for second reading? Is there...
That's the whole batch for second reading.
That's the whole batch for the second reading.
Okay.
To be posted.
I have this one question on JJIC. Are we open for discussion?
Oh, we've definitely got to talk about that one. Sorry, I missed that. All right. Why don't you remove JJIC from your motion and talk about the other ones, and then we'll go over JJIC.
Okay.
Remove JJIC.
Sorry about that.
You withdraw your second on JJIC.
Yes. We'll do everything but that one?
Yes.
That's okay? Any discussion on everything but JJIC? Hearing none? Are we okay sending those to second reading? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tim, are you abstaining?
Yep.
3, 0, 1.
Thank you.
So JJIC eligibility for school athletics. You have one very cumbersome policy with a lot of procedures in it. It has to do with team size and all sorts of things. It's four pages long. It's under a different policy number, but it's a policy that's been the subject of review. When I went and looked at the model policies from the School Boards Association, I was able to find a separate athletics eligibility policy that the superintendent and I worked on and met with Ms. Hartford and had a quick discussion with Mr. Brigger about, and then put in the packet for first reading. And that has to do with the changes that you see in front of you.
Okay.
My recommendation to the board is to take that procedural-laden document and shift it onto the principal and the athletic director to develop an athletic handbook that is inserted as part of the student handbook, and then to develop an academic and behavioral contract for the students that they take home and sign with their parents so they understand the expectations and let it go.
I'm in all of that.
That's it. And I modeled, you know, Dr. Katopski and I modeled this off the, I mean, we did do some changes, like, we went all passing grades, because it's middle school. But really, we're modeling that off the high school and HIA policy as much as we can so we can prepare these middle schoolers for entering high school sports.
Just one question on that.
Yeah.
I liked it. I just didn't know what passing was, because in the old one, it says a 2.0 or...
Right, we're not doing, it's, passing in this school is a 65, Ms. Young?
69.
69. That is passing. The problem with the old policy is they had 78. You had to have a 78. Well, it was ridiculous in that the 78 was like a C+. I mean, it wasn't even a C. It wasn't even a B. So rather than have somebody with their calculator trying to figure out the averages...
Which is fine. So whatever, I just wanted, so whatever the policy of passing is...
And passing could change, and that's why that's a good thing to have in there, because passing's changed since...
And the other issue for kids who are failing at progress report time, it gives them a mechanism to take responsibility and correct that.
Yep. Which I...
Because ultimately, they're student athletes. They're not athlete students, so...
That's why it was great to see 50% of our student athletes for the fall were on the honor roll.
And I think the three of us think that's good.
All right. Motion to bring policy JJIC for second reading?
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job simplifying.
Yeah, it was a group effort, I'll tell you.
Superintendent's report.
Personnel report. On page 109, you've got a resignation of Sandra Hassett.
Motion to accept resignation of Sandra Hassett, faculty. Regret? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you asked for some ridership numbers from Northwood Transportation. I handed out in a separate sheet. They did a snapshot of a Monday and a Friday, just to give you an idea on what the ridership looked like. Any questions on that? At the last meeting, we had some discussions on class size and what is appropriate. On page 111, you've got the New Hampshire School Approval Standards. And I want to remind you that the standards are basically not to exceed numbers. Obviously, they're not ideal numbers. They're talking about grades kindergarten through two at no more than 25 students, grades three through five at 30, and middle school through senior high school at 30 students or fewer per educator. I would say that my professional experience has been that if you're going to put that many students in a classroom, you're not going to be very productive at all. Following that, there are some, I tried to get you, I mean, there's many, 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 many different studies and just some information and some research on different class sizes. You know, I think that my basic recommendation would be certainly kindergarten and first grade, if you could keep them in the 15, 16 range for young children to get off on the right foot in school. I think that that's something to really consider. Grades two through five, certainly you can get up into the, you know, 18, 19 range. And then when you get into the 7th and 8th grade, my cap personally would be around 22. You know, if you can get 20, 19, that's always a wonderful range to be in in class size. You can get a lot done. If you get up to 22, especially with the bigger bodies, it gets a bit crowded in the classroom. And then if you get over 22, my personal and professional opinion is that for each student you add over 22, it just becomes exponentially more difficult to accomplish what you want to do in the classroom, so... You know, and you can see some of the studies here about trying to keep class size down. The interesting article, they also said in here that the most important thing in, although class size certainly impacts productivity in the classroom, the most important thing in the classroom is good teaching. So, I mean, that certainly makes sense, that good teachers obviously are more productive in their classroom, and students benefit from that. So that's just a little bit of background information on class size to hopefully help us as we go through our budget process.
Just like to point out, it does say, "Support such as professional development for teachers in a rigorous curriculum enhance the effects of reduced class size on academic achievement."
Absolutely. I mean, there are a lot of other factors. I mean, class size certainly is important, but professional development, mentoring, training, all of those things, curriculum support, all of those things certainly enter into making an effective classroom and an effective school.
Questions? Comments?
You want me to take it? You want me to take it?
Sure.
There's another question and discussion on public and non-public minutes and what the change is. I did touch base with the School Board Association on asking if there was clarification as to what the change is meant, and you can see on page one eighteen the feedback from Barrett Christina. And, you know, there still is that question about how detailed your regular public minutes need to be and how detailed the non-public minutes need to be. But as to what they include, certainly you can see right there that, what needs to be included in the minutes. They don't really talk to the depth of description in your minutes.
I guess I'll find the letter I have. My understanding, and I read this a couple times now, and it doesn't really disagree with my understanding, is that the two, non-public and public minutes, should basically be similar. So, if your public minutes, and there are some boards that public minutes are, we saying we came, we saw, we conquered, we went home. And then the non-public can be pretty much the same, you know, with who was there, et cetera. And then there are some minutes of which we were quite guilty in this town, that the minutes of our deliberative sessions were, I believe, on one occasion eighteen typed pages long, which is ridiculous. And frankly, I like our minutes that are a synopsis of what we did and said. My only point to bringing up the issue is, my understanding is that I think, under the new law, and I'll get to law and look at it, I think we might be a little skinny on the non-public minutes, meaning we don't put much about what was said and done, you know, what the subject was or anything else, just, we came, we saw, we conquered, we didn't make any votes, and, but, doesn't go off till January, so...
I think that's the interpretation piece of the depth of the minutes. I mean, I don't think that it's debatable on what needs to be included.
I agree. So, if this board wants to continue with our public minutes the way we are, we need similar minutes for non-public. If a board down the street wants to have very limited minutes, then it should be very limited in both public and non-public, is my understanding of, but again, I'll look into it some more. I just, I know the law changed, and I just really wanted to know what we are doing about the change in the law. I mean, it was a definitive law change.
Is there such a thing?
Well, laws are not definitive, the change was definitive. Laws are designed to give two lawyers a free access to argue either side, depending on who will pay them the most amount of money.
Okay. Preschool lease?
The preschool lease is expiring at the end of June two thousand seventeen. The tenant has the opportunity to extend for another two-year period. The joint board is interested in extending the lease, so I'm bringing it back to you to think about the two-year lease and the cost.
Have we had any problems that either of you two are aware of?
With who? The tenants?
The preschool lease. I'm not talking about the tenant.
The tenants are the lease. The tenants are good. No, I haven't seen any issues with the lease, I don't think.
No.
I make a motion that we continue the lease written as it is and that we continue with a two percent increase each year as it is.
Is that what we did last time, is it two percent?
Yes.
I second that.
Just, one question. Nottingham voted no. Is it because their kids don't go there?
Nottingham kids go there.
Has it just seemed like when we were at the joint board meeting, all Nottingham said no on the continuation of the lease?
No, it was unanimous.
They didn't?
We haven't voted on the lease.
I don't think so.
No, they didn't.
No, it was unanimous, I believe that...
Yeah, I don't think...
I don't think so.
No.
Either they said no or they abstained.
We didn't have a vote.
We didn't vote on it.
We did, we voted on last joint board meeting.
We voted, they, we voted on bringing, whether we want, they wanted to bring it forward to, yeah, to, for us to bring it to us.
I don't think Nottingham has to send their kids to us if they don't want to.
I know they don't have to, but it just seemed weird that I'll...
If they abstained from sending it back to here, not because they didn't want that, that they didn't think it was their role.
Nottingham is smarting a little right now because their class, their class size over at that school is considerably higher, so many of the costs of the SAU are going to go up for them and down for us, et cetera. So, that's on their mind all the time.
Well, and the joint board...
Except for the preschool.
Except for the preschool, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they're against it by any, I haven't heard, I haven't heard that that's the case.
No, I talked to Nottingham, I talk to Sue almost daily, and I'm not aware of any problem. They don't have the room for it, so they don't have a big choice.
They do not.
They would have to put it in a closet.
That's an understatement.
Run the room.
Yeah.
All right, so, I'll, oh, sorry. You ready? Second in. Aye.
Any discussion, more, further discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Four, zero.
Zero. Committee reports? Any committees meet?
Was not able to.
I met with Scott, we're going to continue to meet for the...
I meet with Barbie all the time, actually. Every Thursday.
The district goals discussion, was that, was that the thing that you handed out, the minutes? Is that what you meant?
That may have been a carryover before you had your work session, so...
Okay, good. Parking lot items?
Just on that, was my email sent out to anybody? That I asked about, anybody get my email?
I put it into, I put it into minutes and brought it tonight.
Oh, that one? Oh, sorry, that one, yes.
You're talking about the change this to that email?
Yeah, like the change to visionary goal, uh, how to write a goal, no.
I think, what'd you send that, Friday night?
I sent that, like, Monday, Monday or Tuesday. I sent it to you two.
I got, I got the minutes here to put into, to put into formal minutes and bring to the thing. And then I got another email from you that was like...
Short, yeah, talking about...
One sentence.
Yeah, there was one before that.
Please change the date to state.
Yeah, but there was an email before that.
And that was Friday.
Yeah, Friday, yeah.
No, that's why I was like, I don't even know what he's talking about, and it's Friday.
So, the first one was... I'll resend it. That's why I...
You're getting the blank look here, I don't know.
I remember, it was like Friday night, I looked at it, I was like, what is he saying?
That would make sense.
So, parking lot items, review supply totals, all areas?
Say again?
Review supply totals?
Yeah, means that your next meeting, when you have your monthly expense report, you're going to look at your supplies and where they're at.
Isn't this a little early to be looking at supplies?
This year's.
Yeah, I know.
Depends.
We're like three months into the school year.
That has a little more history, too. There was a discussion a year ago or so that, to put it on there as a marker, that when you got to the budget process, to look at your supply lines and just review whether they were appropriate or not.
I got you, okay. Budget development, okay.
Another thing that irritates, and it came up in the last budget committee meeting a few weeks ago, is, and really, at that point, I don't think it was a fair discussion, but they look at the supply lines and say, well, jeez, you budgeted thirty-one thousand dollars and it was supposed to be for this, this, and this, and you haven't spent it. Why not?
This point in the year?
Yes. Now, that was two, three weeks ago, and I think that was a little early. But really, their point is, if we budget for a skedaddle and the budget committee approves for us to buy that skedaddle and the town approves the budget for that skedaddle, why haven't we bought the skedaddle?
And then if Marjorie encumbers it, then the budget committee complains that we encumbered it. But then if we don't need it for some reason, because we have new administration...
She worked with her teachers and came up with a bunch of needs, like I assume the previous principals have, and those needs are in there. So, next October and November, assuming that those are approved, the budget committee is going to say the same damn thing, well, we gave you the...
But that skedaddle could have been for the first grade teacher that we got rid of.
Why didn't you buy whatever it is you said you needed?
Left.
Juice.
That's even more valid point, when you look at things like new equipment, textbooks, those types of things. Supplies, there is going to be a period of time throughout the year where you're going to order and reorder and reorder, but, you know, the things like new equipment, by all means, I mean, if you're buying it...
Last year it was music. You know, we put in, it's very specific, you would look at the lines underneath, very specific, we're going to buy this musical instrument, and that one, and that one, and months later, we still haven't, you know...
Am I, I'm having like a deja vu. Have we done this before?
Yes, yes, we have.
Like, three years ago?
Yes, exactly.
So, I probably said something like this. I budgeted for four-room amplification systems this year for a kid who has deaf or hard of hearing that moved. Do you want me to go buy those anyway?
Yes.
No.
If you don't spend it, then you have to.
I didn't hear you.
There you go.
Maybe I should buy them.
Put it in your office.
What?
Buy some scattles or skiddies, whatever.
He's got them, he'll let Rick use them when he comes. Be all set.
That's true. I could put them in the cafeteria.
No.
Oh, that'd make it even worse in there.
Can you imagine that?
The, what's, what's next on? Oh, it's in my hand. School board timeline. The only thing I was going to say is in February, like the first part of February, we should do the start-stop time for the school year because that's part of the CBA.
Yep.
And that's not on our timeline, I just was, just because we were doing the CBA, that should be in, on our timeline so that we don't miss it again. But right now, it's just budget prep. Future agenda items, oh, is this where you said it? You got them?
I got them.
Okay. Anything else for future agenda items?
Future agenda items? Budget, budget, budget.
Yeah, most of it's budget. Let's see what I have here.
Work.
Policies, budget, Marjorie.
We've got, we've got budget, we've got default budget, we've got the policies that are coming back, that's about all we have, that's going to be most of it.
That was what most of it was today? Future meetings, November sixteenth, joint board meeting at CBA, November seventeenth, six-thirty meeting, our regular board meeting, November twenty-eighth, six o'clock, SAU preschool budget hearing at the SAU office. November twenty-eighth, six-fifteen, joint board meeting, SAU office, December one, six-thirty, regular board meeting, December fifteenth, regular board meeting. It should be in there, December tenth, though, shouldn't there? Isn't it December tenth, the budget committee?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yep, December tenth, the budget committee, what time? I don't remember, I don't know what time.
Is that a Saturday?
Yeah.
Nine AM.
Okay, nine AM. December fifteenth, six-thirty, regular board meeting, December nineteenth, six-fifteen, joint board meeting, SAU. Closing public comments.
Oh, before that...
Oh, sorry.
Yes, can we put up, because I know Keith is not here, a work session for the budget?
Before our next meeting, you mean, or?
For our next meeting, yes.
I'd like to see the changes before we have the work session.
So, if we can get those changes as soon as possible, so we can get the work session in.
Oh, you mean because Keith's not here, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, because we can't pick a date.
Well, we have one on the seventeenth, and we have to have those out to the third, so if we, well, if we have our next meeting, and then we can have a...
A work session right after that.
Yeah, but that's...
But then, yeah, we can't do that.
That's Thanksgiving.
Then you have to have another special meeting.
All right, well, we can discuss it after public, after public comment.
Sharon Plour, Ten Lower Camp Road, employee at Northwood School. Just a couple of quick budget things, and it may be too late for this year, maybe something as building leadership team we may want to discuss, but I want to throw it out there for you guys to think about. We currently are using Ames Web as our data collection process. The version we have is now obsolete, and they're trying to sell us a new one, and I think it's either six fifty or seven dollars a student, which, just for quick and easy math, say four hundred kids, at seven bucks, it's twenty-eight hundred dollars, where there's Dibbles, which is another program, very similar, I've used both, it's like fifty-fifty, and they'll only charge us a dollar a student. So, that's four hundred dollars, so that's a quick, you know, twenty-four hundred dollars savings on that line. So, something to think about there. The other one, automated subsystem. I don't know if you ever looked into it. I know other two districts I've been in, you're more proactive than reactive, so it's like you're a real tighter line on your subs. You have a wider pool of subs, which I know is an issue for us here because we have very limited subs. I'm just thinking that might save us some money. Again, I don't know that we're going to get it for the quick turnaround for this year, but something to look at. And just with regards to hiring the paraprofessionals, and I don't know with the contract how this all works out, going with part-time pairs, because that then eliminates all your health care and all of that, which is a huge cost. So, just didn't know if that's something we can look at, too, and we may have more people apply, if they could just work a morning or an afternoon. So, just some quick thoughts. Thanks.
Any other comments, anyone from the board?
Are we going to discuss something after public?
Say that.
Somebody was talking about something, you said we'll discuss it after the public comment.
Oh, we're going to finish the discussion about if we, the, a meeting for...
Work meeting.
Yeah, a work session for the budget.
When, make it any date you want, anytime you want, and I'll be there. I don't care.
When could you get those budgets to us?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.